Councilmember Shrubnik. Councilmember Curtis. Excuse me. Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here. If you'll please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. The city works, Forest Crews. See, I'm a little thrown back when we got our surface water person. That's good.
Surface water perceptive.
Small city, so everyone, everyone does their part again, does everything.
Good evening. So yes, so I'm here to kind of revisit City Works. I think it's been about three and a half years since I was last here and provided some training on how to access the program and search for service requests and see what's going on in there. Very briefly, City Works is the city's asset management software and service request management software that we use at the city to take in all of the public's and internal service requests and track them and log them using the software. We can also do inspections and work orders with this software. I don't have those modules up for the council. What's going to be available in your inbox are just the service requests that you can search through and see, but we do use it for a variety of purposes in the city. It's mobile enabled, so our inspectors can go out and do their facility and catch basin inspections on iPads and they're using this software and putting in all the results real time and getting work orders out to our Vector operator and Lake Forest Crews get the work orders and fill those out and get back. So it's a very robust program. But what I'm going to focus on this evening is the service request component, which you may hear referred to as Cars quite often, which stands for Citizen Action Request. The previous database we used referred to them as that. This software calls them service requests, so I may use that term interchangeably. We started, we went live with this on January 1st, 2014, and then I came early 2014 and showed council how to log in and kind of use the program. We've had a few updates since then, and we just recently completed a rather large outdated update, so it seemed like a good time to refresh everyone on how to log in and use the program. So here I am. I provided Rob a short time back with everyone's login and password, so you should either have that, or if you don't, I can have Rob share that with you. And it also has the URL on how to get there and log into the program. So here I am on the login screen, and I haven't really loaded everything, haven't done anything, so that this should be very similar to if you log in for the first time on a laptop or computer, this is what you would also be seeing. And everyone has the same inbox setup with what you see, so I'm just going to pick a random login here, but it should look the same for everyone. So you put in the username, the password, and then down here typically you would be using the OF stands for Office. They have a couple different types. This tablet has slightly larger fonts and buttons for folks who are using this on iPads out in the field, a little bit easier to use, but for the most part you probably just would use the Office login. And then that will take you into your City Works inbox. And what I've set up by default is everyone will see numerous panels as you scroll down, and it's broken up by department right now. And this, which is referred to as the inbox, you can always get to by clicking on the inbox button in the upper left, and that will bring you back to this screen. And then within the inbox, there's two tabs. I've set one up just to show you open service requests, so these are current and active service requests that staff are working on. And then in each department, it'll show you the number on the vertical and on the horizontal of the different types. So I could scroll down here, for instance, in Public Works, Open Service Request and Surface Water. So these are all current ones that staff are working on various, so we've got nuisance, maintenance issues, groundwater issues of various kinds. And if you click on one, it will actually just take you to a table and show you all the specific service requests. And then from here, you could click on one of these and get information about that service request. For now, I'm going to go back to the inbox and then... Yes, so these are all open service requests. You can also see all service requests in the system by clicking on the tab in the inbox that says All Service Requests. And you can go back and see, so the first one here is sorted by year, so you can kind of see as you go down, we get closer to current. Here's 2017, we had 1,760 service requests come in. And then if you click on one of these bars, it will open up that table that I had before, but obviously that's just going to be a whole lot of information at once.
Was that big a jump, or were we just...
I think it's a combination of getting better at taking these in and recording them, but also over the years with just the internet, social media, I think the awareness of the public and how they can get a hold of their local municipality is increasing. I mean, it's just people can just literally click, you know, a button on Facebook now and be in contact with the city. So it's definitely a combination of those two, but there's a very steady increase, as you can tell. And then, again, kind of broken up by different departments after that, so you could scroll in and see, here's Development Services, Code Enforcement, so 182 of there, 121, 80. And you click on those and you go back to that screen where it takes you to each individual service request that you can open. So that's the inbox, kind of in a nutshell. If you want to kind of dive in and search for something in particular, well, I should also point out that you don't need to worry about messing anything up. This is set up to where it's basically read-only. So if you try making one, you're going to see this, you know, the permission isn't there. It will still look like you can type in and put in information, but there's, you can't save it. It doesn't like that option, so there's no way to really mess it up. But what would be useful is if you want a search request, you hit the dropdown next to the service request button, and you can come into here, and basically any field in the database that data can be put into, you can search for something specific in those. So for instance, you can come over to the different problem types that we have. So these are all the different categories of service requests we have, and then you could dive in further. For instance, in Storm, we can go to Flooding, and then you could search and just view all of the flooding service requests that the cities had come in. We could go back to the General Tab. You can look by who was it submitted to, when was it closed, when was it open, initiated. So say we're interested in what happened in some particular timeframe, we could do, you know, January 1st of 2014 through 12/31 of 2014 and just look at that year. We would hit Apply, and in the upper right, it will show you what's been put in the search so far. So we're looking for Flooding Service Requests in 2014. If we hit Search, it would just bring up those 38 service requests that we had in 2014 related to flooding issues. So it looks like there were, yeah, so 38 there. And then from here, you can usually see some basic information, the address, what it was, who it was submitted to. If you're in Surface Water, a lot of times it's going to have my name in there, but for other types of service requests, you may see other staff members. And the date that it was initiated. And then you can just click on one, and I can kind of show you what is included in there. So again, the way this is logged in, it will look like you can mess things up, but you'll notice there's no Save button here, so you could go through and change all these values, and it wouldn't really matter because you can't save that change to the database. But when you get into the service request, there's a lot of basic information in here, when it came in, who it was dispatched to, when we responded. You can see all the comments in this field here, so these are all recorded chronologically, and you can see any staff members working on this can type in whatever they saw or did, save it, and then it's going to be there for everyone. Address, who it came in. This was one called in by Mr. Swanson over there by Plywood Supply on the Burt Gilman Trail. And then the attachments here, we can attach any type of PDF, photo, video, any file we want, and then it's stored within the City Works database and accessible to anyone logged in. So if you wanted to see a photo, for instance, you just click on it, it'll download it in the browser, you could pull it up, and then there you go. The only other, there is some, if you wanted more caller information, you can click the dropdown arrow next to the Request button up there and then pull in information about the caller. So if staff call it in, there'll be staff information here. If a citizen called it in, you would see citizen information. And then you can usually, if there are other service requests by this individual, they will usually line up and you can start jumping to those as well there. So let me come back to the inbox. So that's kind of the inbox and the data, but what's another nice feature of City Works is in the upper right, there's this little kind of folded paper icon, and that opens up the GIS maps. Everything in City Works is geocoded to a spot on a map. And when you first open it up, it will... It may take a few moments. We did have it working an hour ago. Are we on the right Wi-Fi this time? Oh, no, it went back to the other one. Yeah. I'll just start over again. So the map button, click on that, there we go. So when it first opens up, it's going to just load everything, so you'll see a lot of icons popping up, all the different map layers. And then it might take a moment, it'll load up the tools. Once you get this loaded on your computer and then set up your legend or what layers you want displayed, it should remember that so that every time you come in, it's not just loading up everything every single time. So this is kind of that first approach. The first thing I would do is come to the Tools, and the Legend is obviously an important one that you may want to put in there. And then some of these others, you know, aren't going to be very applicable here, you know, you're not going to be creating activities or doing much. You can do some basic measurements and things like that, but the Legend is definitely useful because that will open up the Legend on the right, and then you can start kind of utilizing what it is that you want. And I will start at the bottom. We have several aerial base maps in here, so if you're ever interested in just kind of taking a look at development over the years, we have about five in there going back as far as 1936 up to the most current 2015. And we actually, a couple weekends ago, just flew a 2018 aerial, which should be available by the end of summer. And you would turn these, make these visible by clicking on the little I icon, and that will turn these layers on and off. So we can zoom in and you can see, that's the 36 aerial, and then it progressively works up. So there's 2015. By default, it has parcel outlines, streets, addresses, streams, some King Counties, some Homish County, background layers. Surface Water's in there, and then as we add utilities and GIS, they'll start showing up, so you probably don't always want to see those. You can just, again, click the I icon, and it will take that off. And then the department service request searches that are in the inbox are all showing up in here, so these are all the open service requests. I can zoom out a little bit. So each one of the markers there represent an open service request. Jumping ahead before it can load. So again, you can leave those on, you can turn those off if you want less clutter on there, but what's nice is you can click on one of those and just see exactly what it is. So here's a Stormwater Service Request submitted to me that's in there, and if you actually click on it, it'll go back to the Inbox tab and just take you directly to all the information associated with that service request from the map. Yeah, so in the Legend, if you hit the little down arrow, it will show you more information. So you can always do that to see what it is you're looking at. Or if you just click on it, the third line down tells you what kind of service request it is. And then the other nice thing too is if you're working from the inbox side of things... You can see the map will communicate this, so if I just pick a random one here, open up this, when you come back, it will automatically pan to that service request in the map. The map might take just a little bit of getting used to, but you know, it's very similar to online Google Map or Bing. You can zoom in and out by scrolling on the mouse when you click and move around, you can pan. The tools over here, you could also use. By default, it's just on Pan, but if you could switch it to that, and it'll zoom in, zoom out. You can change how those float on the screen. You could minimize them or just make them invisible altogether by clicking the I icon up here. And in the Legend, so the I icon makes things visible and invisible. If you actually wanted to select something, for instance, maybe you are interested in what's Stormwater Infrastructure is out there, you could zoom in. It's next to the I, this is the, this box makes things selectable, so you can, for instance, oh, you can always hit the down arrow, so this shows you what the icons mean, so all of these points on here are catch basins, and the red squares are a certain type of catch basin. And if you wanted to see what that was, you could make it selectable, and we'll make the tools here visible again. And using the Select Tool, there are different ones. You can make a square, select by point, typically just select that one, and that allows you to make a square like this, and then you can select something on the map, and then it will actually pop up and show you what that is. And you could get information about that was, so what kind of grade it has. This is probably not very exciting for you, but you know, as I said, other utilities in there, you can do the same thing. Anything on here that's selectable, you can make it selectable and make a selection on it, and then get information on it down here. Let's see, and as far as the map goes, that will typically be, you know, moving around, zooming in and out, and selecting things is, it's pretty basic. Oh, printing sometimes, there, you can turn that on, and then it will give you some options on sizes and everything if you wanted to print something out. And one thing to note on that, this is all public information, but still, if citizens want information, they would need to go through the Public Records Request, submit that, and then that allows us to go through and just make sure that any non-disclosable records are sorted through appropriately, so, because there is, particularly in the attachments, you may have access to information that needs to be vetted through before it can be disclosed. So I'd just like to point that out.
Thank you for addressing that, because I was just going to ask you about what was public record and what wasn't. Do you happen to know, is there a, is there a policy for us as a council body as far as what, I mean, when we, if we use this for information, to get information, are we able to talk about it or, you know, discuss it in basically, in what we see on here? I just wanted to know if there was a policy. I can't recall how we dealt with it before, but sometimes there may just be a simple question to answer that somebody may have, but on the same hand, I don't, I don't really want to go down that path. I just want to know if we have a policy as a body.
Well, I can let Rob address it in more detail, but in general, I would treat it, I mean, you're privy to information just from day to day coming in and with your access to the computers here and everything, so you know, it'd be kind of the same, you know, you wouldn't, you would have to use your own discretion on what you pull from that and what you feel is appropriate or not appropriate to share, but as far as, you know, the information, all of it is public record, but it would have to go through the Public Records Request because that's where city staff go through and make sure that the appropriate items are provided, that can be provided, and if not, there's a process for identifying what's not provided and why it's not provided, so that process is, needs to be followed before it can go out the door. But if someone had a question and, yeah, you know, and you look through here, like I said, I would use your discretion on what would be appropriate or not unless Rob had something additional to add.
I don't know that we have a written policy about it, but I think if you're talking to a citizen on the phone and you're looking up their case, you can look in here and say, well, it's like the city did X, Y, and Z on this date. That's fine. And you can say, oh yeah, the case is not closed out yet, it looks like it's in Richard's inbox, I can follow up with him tomorrow, you know, you can do, communicate like that.
Yeah, thank you.
So that, getting around, I mean, that covers the basics, yeah, so. Sure. Well, for instance, if there, you know, someone was upset about a landslide occurring near them or on their property, and you could come in here and see reports and attachments and photos or inspection records that were in here, you know, those could have privileged communications between the city and the city attorney, for instance, and so just printing those out and supplying those would probably not be the appropriate thing to do, but as Rob said, you could say, yes, you know, it's definitely in here, staff are working on it, it looks like it was opened this date. I mean, how many, yeah, I wouldn't...
Yeah, that's fine.
I would feel so, yeah. And those, in the future, we would actually, are working on getting this integrated with the website to actually, well, I mean, currently, citizens can go on the website and submit service requests, and it's just through kind of an email format. We will be looking into seeing if we can provide something a little more in-depth where they can actually see the status of service requests and, you know, see a map, submit service requests with a little bit more information that goes directly into the system. Right now, the online portal allows people to get on, put the information in, submit that to the city, but then internally, we have to get that into City Works and get the process started, so in the future, some of that, some of this will be public facing, so they can come in and see exactly, for instance, what, where it's going, how far, you know, where is it at in the process, and basic information like that.
So thinking about it a little more, some things I'd be cautious about is if they're, if they're upset with the city and there's potential liability to the city, like, let's say they have flooding or a landslide or something, and they may be pointing the finger at the city, I'd be, I'd be pretty careful about what you say directly to the citizen because that could be attorney-client privileged information, or it could, you know, hurt our position legally. Also, another thing I'd be careful about is if there's potential liability to, on a property owner, and getting caught in the middle of that and making a statement that it's the neighbor's fault, it's not your fault, it's the neighbor's fault. And then just generally getting sucked into what I call Hatfield and McCoy issues. And so that's often where citizens come to us, is they're mad at their neighbor, and then they're mad, the neighbor's mad at them, and they're both pointing their fingers at each other, and they want the city to come in and take sides. And so that's another thing I'd just be careful about, and what's great, the great thing for you is you can always defer to staff and let us be the ones to be the bad guys and deal with it.
Anything someone would like to see again, or other questions? In the map? Sure. So when you open up the map the first time, the only thing that shows is this Tools. So that first thing you want to do is turn on that Legend, which opens up to the right here. And then by default, just everything we have is on, so the map will be very cluttered and it'll have all, everything will be loading on top of each other. And this I, it's a little eyeball, that can make things visible and not visible. So you can, you know, for instance, you don't need all the aerials kind of loading on top of each other, you could just load up the one, you make the one you want to see visible, which is typically the most current one, and then turn the others off. You know, addresses, so see, I can turn the address numbers off, and they'll go on and off. Right now, the only utility we have in there is Surface Water, but that continually grows, we'll be switching some of our other operations, adding those other layers in here, guardrails, signs, things like that, so that list, the list will keep growing, so that's why I just want to make sure that you know how to make those visible and invisible, so you're not just seeing a giant clutter of dots every time you try to look at this map, so, yeah, knowing how to make things visible and invisible are good. And then at the very top are the, each panel that you have in your inbox. How those are set up is it's basically, I've done a search, and then I've just saved that in the inbox, so this is just the results of a search. So this, every time you're in your inbox, this is always being updated because it's just searching and querying what's the most latest open one. So for instance, if one of these code enforcement cases got closed two minutes ago, the next time I refreshed a screen, that would show three instead of four. And that's what's showing up at the very top, so you can show those different service request searches. searches. That is true, yeah. And, yeah, so just learning how to, you know, use the search feature, if there's anything of particular interest to you, you can go in there and search for those types, you can look for keywords, and, yep, have at it. There's a lot of good information in there. I think since we've, we've started doing this, it's become very valuable for a lot of staff's workflow, when dealing with something, you can go and just oftentimes see that this has been an issue there already, perhaps nearby, there's all the, there's lots of great information available to get you going, especially in stormwater, you know, I can get a complaint about something, go there and see that, oh, this is happening all around there, let's, you know, look deeper into this, and maybe there's an underlying issue that we can resolve and, and stop this from happening over and over again, versus someone responds, forgets about it, two years later, someone responds, forgets about it, all that information is there forever now. Yes, forward slash City Works. And that will... It's, yeah, when I first started up, it's interesting, I think if, when you're on the city's Wi-Fi, it does, there's some weird security settings, so that's why I couldn't use the network that was using the projector, I had to go to a, another network, so I can ask more about that, but that's some sort of internal network security that we have set up, because I, like my inspectors, when they come in on the iPads, if it accidentally goes onto the city network, all of a sudden, everything stops working and they gotta do a little workaround, so, and I can, I'll make a note and look into that more, because it is kind of a nuisance to, when it, it's, well, you'd think the city's own application should be able to work on its own Wi-Fi, but, you know. Log in, I was using yours as a example there. The little, next to the map, up here, it looks like you can change things, and yes, and when I, I did change, so these were all new passwords that I sent Rob to pass out, so definitely good to make sure you don't share that or, or let it get out. I don't think, if you do want to change it, you might just want to let me know, just in case I want to do kind of updates or anything to everyone's inbox across the board, that doesn't mess anything up. But it does work, I can, I'll load this up on my iPhone, sometimes if I'm, if I'm out in the field and want to pull up the map and, and see, you know, the drainage maps around where I'm at, and it's very useful, so even if you're not necessarily interested in diving into the data, sometimes just the maps are kind of cool, you can go and see what's around and lots of good information. And always, you know, if you've just got logistic questions about how to, to work it or, or figure something out, don't hesitate to just shoot me an email and, and I can help. Any other questions or anything to touch on again? Let me take a quick look at the agenda.
So, whereas sexual assault awareness calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, whereas in the state of Washington, 45% of women and 22% of men having experienced sexual violence. Whereas in King County, 6,657 adults and children received health services and accredited community sex programs last year. Whereas nationally, 1 in 5 children under 18 are sexually abused. Last year, 2,000 children and youth who have been sexually abused received services from the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. Whereas in 2016, 18% of 10th graders in Washington reported that they have been made to engage in unwanted kissing. Whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on women, men, children, and youth, fear, concern for safety, post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work for school, and whereas, working together to educate our community about sexual violence, supporting survivors when they come forward, speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and engaging in best practice sexual violence prevention, work helps in sexual violence. Now, therefore leading City Kenmore Jewelry Cafes and Communities across King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence, pending with survivors who proclaiming equal and awareness among. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, and children. Is there anybody here except this guy? Not. From the organization?
Oh, sorry. Good job.
Yes, this program, I think, and the program that we run in October, we've got purple lights, put on your front door, lights, bring awareness to domestic violence. Fairness in our community.
It is my privilege to introduce Terry Beilenberg, please stand up. She is our new civil engineer who will be assisting us with engineering review for all of our development permits and assisting us with our traffic concurrency, that sort of thing, and she's also going to be our ADA coordinator. She just started last Monday, and already the smoke is coming out of her ears from everything she has to learn, but she's taking it like a trooper. Terry comes from the Washington State Department of Transportation, where she worked on a lot of projects, but most notably, she worked on 520 and the 99 Tunnel, and before that, she worked for AT&amp;T Cellular and Western Wireless as a radio frequency engineer, so she knows a lot about cell phones and was responsible for helping you keep your cellphone coverage going, right? So she has a lot of experience, we're really great to have her on board here with the City of Kenmore, and I think she's going to be a great asset to us. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly glad to have you. I think you're...
I'm a fire commissioner, I was elected in 2018. The reason I'm speaking here tonight is in 2000, or December 2017, I became aware of what I believe is unethical behavior by the current fire commissioners regarding compensation. A commissioner explained to me exactly how they made sure to receive the maximum amount of compensation allowed by state law by stopping by a fire station each day of the week, logging into a computer as a record, and then submitting a request for the $114 compensation. Since that discussion, I've had, put in hundreds of hours talking to the state auditor's office, I've talked to the Washington State Fire Commissioners Association, the King County Fire Commissioners Association, and numerous fire commissioners from surrounding districts in the state. I am not aware of, found any other Board of Commissioners that are currently allowing this kind of practice. Some examples are in 2017, a commissioner received compensation for 74 office visits for a total of $8,436. Another commissioner received compensation for 34 check emails for a total of $3,876. Two of our commissioners received a maximum annual amount of compensation in 2017, and yet, in talking to the State Fire Commissioners Association, I was told 98% of commissioners never reached the maximum amount, since the intent of the state law is to compensate only for meetings, training, and duties on behalf of the district. Now, keep in mind, these commissioners have been in the positions for 16 to over 25 years, so we're talking potentially tens of thousands of dollars. Since January 1, I have been trying to get the Board to adopt a new compensation policy that would restrict and clearly define when and how a commissioner is receiving compensation, but I can't do it by myself, so that's why I'm here, I'm asking for the help from the elected officials and our citizens. I need you to attend our next meeting. Typically, we have one, at the most, citizen present, so our citizens are not aware of what is happening. We will be discussing and voting on proposed changes to our existing compensation program, you will see the type of requests that are being submitted for compensation, and we will be voting to approve or not those compensation requests. My hope is as citizens become more involved, the Board will adopt the proper policy and stop this current practice. Everyone needs to realize that this is thousands of your taxpayer dollars that should be going towards things as firefight training and equipment. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 3, at 5:00 PM at Fire Station 51, which is the department's headquarters in downtown Kenmore. I've got a handout, I've got the date and time and location of our next meeting, my card is attached, it has my email address and personal phone number, I'm welcome for any conversations or discussions to have further information, and I'm asking everybody please attend, because it's a very important meeting. Again, contact me if you have any additional information you'd like to know, because my information is here. Thank you.
If you just give that to the clerk, she'll make sure we get it.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Blazey, is that how you say it? Blazey.
Hello, greetings to Mayor Baker and council members, so my name is Dr. Jennifer Blazey, and I am a Morelands Elementary parent. I have two little boys, so I have a 10-year-old who is in 4th grade at Morelands and an 8-year-old who's in 2nd grade. I'm also the current PTA president at Morelands, and I have a group here with me today, I've got some parents who are going to come talk to you. We have some concerns, we have a lovely new park that Kenmore City has put on our grounds, and we are very thankful for that, it's been a really nice addition for the kids. However, we have some significant safety concerns and risk concerns for both the district and the city. I do safety patrol on Monday mornings, and so I'm on campus, and what I have seen a number of times is random adults walking through our playground with kids there. That is something that is long-term not a safe thing, especially given the current school environment that we're experiencing, so we're going to be sitting and talking with the district. What we're asking for is that the city opens up a dialogue with the district, because this isn't something that is going to go away, and it's not something that's safe, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the rest of the people who've come with me, but I appreciate you listening, and I appreciate working on this together going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Quinn Wyatt?
Good evening, my name is Quinn, and I've been a resident of Kenmore the majority of my life.
I'm sorry, what, what's your full name?
Quinn Wyatt.
Quinn, okay, thank you.
Yeah. I went to Morelands, Northridge Junior High and Ewmore High School, I just recent, yes, exactly. I just recently moved back with my family in June, and now my daughter attends Morelands Elementary. I want to start out this discussion by expressing my appreciation for the new playground and the equipment, it was a much-needed upgrade. I now want to express my concern and the concern of many other parents at the school for the security of the park during school hours. I and many other parents have grave concerns over the park being open to the public during school hours. I and many other parents have concerns that they are open bathrooms on the park during school hours, though they aren't open yet. I, along with other parents, have concerns that there is no fencing along 84th, which is a barrier between Main Road and the park. There have been several incidents in Kenmore area over the last few months that have heightened my concern. One caused a lockdown for Morelands, which to this day, my daughter still has strong feelings over and stressed about. The other incidents were near abductions of children from the side of the road in our surrounding area. These compiled with the increased focus on security in schools because of the shootings have pushed the need of action to the forefront. I understand that there has been, sorry, I feel installing a fence along 84th, which has locking gates at both walkways, having it closed during school hours, and locking the gates to the parking lot of 81st during school hours would go a long way to securing the perimeter of the park and helping keep the children safe. I know mine is not the first voice you have heard about this, these concerns, however, I am here to work with you until we have created the safest outcome we can. If money is an issue, I will fundraise. If you need petitions signed, I will go out and get signatures. I want to be a partner with you and help come to a solution. I understand that there are many people in this community to consider, and that the park is shared with the school, and that the school doesn't own it. However, I strongly feel that the safety of the children takes precedence over the need of a middle-aged man doing yoga in the park in the middle of the day. We moved from Renton, where we were in the neighborhood for 10, almost 11 years, and there was a park in a school that had the same situation. However, the park was closed to the public until school was let out, with gates surrounding it, fences with gates, and no one in the area had an issue with it. I think we all understood that keeping kids safe was a priority. My daughter still brings up the lockdown at random moments and says, mommy, I was crying and I was calling for you, I wanted you. It breaks my heart that we live in a world where these steps need to be taken, but we do. My daughter is five, so I must be her voice. Please, when you hear me, make this request, hear her voice, not mine.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt.
Matt Greff?
because it doesn't have paved sidewalks, I'm in the middle of it. And it's just dangerous. My friends don't want to come, my family doesn't want to come, because you can't see to get back out. So they want me to come to their house all the time. And I have a beautiful one-acre yard and a nice house, and I want my friends to be able to come over and visit me. I think something should be done about it. It's random cars, they're not the same every day. It just changes all the time, and I don't see the need for it. The two developments on both sides of me, they all have double and triple car garages. They have nice, big landing pads, they have nice, big, wide cul-de-sacs with gutters and sidewalks. And it seems like that unless they have over six cars, they should be able to be able to park in their own area. And anything that you can do to help me, I would really appreciate, because I feel in danger every time I have to go down on the road. I think it could be better to use this for it. There's a lot of bicycles, there's a lot of walkers, and I think that it could be used for a better purpose. And it's only, it's only two little blocks. You go all the way up the rest of 80th, there's huge developments up the road, there's no parking anywhere up there, there's no cars parked. It's just so that they can walk to the bus stop. And they could use the park and ride a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt.
Carrie Grayden.
Hi, I'm Carrie Grayden. I moved to Kenmore about four years ago with my family, which now includes a 5-year-old kindergartner at Morelands Elementary, and we also have a 2-year-old who we're looking ahead to kindergarten in the years to come. Not yet, not yet. I am one of the parents who is very concerned about security and safety for our children at Morelands. The upgrades to the park and the playground are beautiful, truly beautiful, and we're really grateful for that. We use the park even for my kids started going there. We'd go there on the weekends or after school, and we'd enjoy playing, and then we'd be like, "Oh darn, there's no bathroom, let's hurry home." But you know, this proximity to this school was part of why we wanted to live in Kenmore, because Kenmore is known for having good schools. And so we were really excited about living so close, we could walk to Morelands Elementary. And now I feel like we're faced with a situation where we don't feel like our children are very safe. I do feel like there's a risk involved to being there with that city park open as it is and open to the public during the day. I do understand that staff at school is instructed to, you know, ask people to leave if they see them at the playground when the kids are going out for recess, but they're still there, they still can walk through at any point. And they don't always understand where the barrier of the park and the school is. So they'll walk through and get a sip of water at the water fountain on campus, and or, you know, walk out a different way than they walked in. And it just, as a parent, it doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel good to have my child so vulnerable. And I mean, she's five, so she's vulnerable wherever she is, but you want to believe your kids are safe at school. You want to feel like you're taking them to learn and be safe, and they'll come home to you whole and okay. And so I just, I want to echo my fellow parents and just ask that we can work together to figure out a way to make it a better situation for everyone. Hopefully, we can make it so that it's okay to close the park during the day, during while the schoolchildren are there. That would be wonderful, that would be my ideal, I think. But yeah, we'd love to work with you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grayden.
Jean Wednig.
Hello. My name is Jean Wednig. I have been a resident of Kenmore since 2006 and a resident of the East Side my entire life. I also have a 5th grader at Morelands Elementary School, and I am, excuse me, a 4th grader. He'd get so mad. I am also concerned with the safety of the playground during the day. We have a very unique situation between the elementary school and the park. It's unique to the school district, so it requires a unique solution. My ask is to work with the members of the community and the PTA, and to close the park during school hours. I understand the gravity of that request to close a city park that is public land and public property, but in no other school in the district can members of the public walk through the area where kids are playing during the day. It's a huge safety risk, it's a concern, and I think it's simply a matter of time until something negative happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wednig.
Amy Booker.
Hello. My name is Amy Booker, and I've lived in Kenmore for a few years. I have three children who go to Morelands Elementary, a 5th grader, a 3rd grader, and a 1st grader. And like all of the fellow parents that are here with me, I'm very concerned about the safety of my children during school hours with the park having open access. Carrie mentioned that, you know, staff is told to ask the members of the community to leave during times when the children are out there, but it's my understanding that staff is not actually allowed to do that, and that random people are allowed to walk onto the park and play at the playground, or walk through, or do yoga in the park at any time, even while children are present outside trying to play. And I just, I do not feel safe about that at all, or the open access, since the park's renovations to 84th, which is a busy street. Again, a lot of, you know, children running out towards the street and having to have them constantly being rained back up closer to the school building. It's just a major concern. You know, I don't feel okay with having my children interacting with middle-aged men during their school day that have not been vetted by the school, have not been signed in, and nobody's aware of them even being on school grounds, because there's no check-in for them. So I, I am willing to do whatever I can to help work with you and the school, and whatever it is to keep our children safe. Because I, I love this community, and so far, everything has gone well, and I've felt very safe here, and this has been the best place I've ever lived in my whole life, and I've lived in a lot of places. So I've really, you know, come to enjoy Kenmore a lot, and I just want my children to have a good, safe experience at their elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Booker.
Stephanie Marsh.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Marsh. I too am a Morelands parent. I have a 2nd grader and a soon-to-be kindergartner, and just want to echo my other fellow parents about the safety concerns and the risk of my children being safe at school with the open access of the park. And I'm just hoping for some solution with gating or a fence, or possibly just closing the park to the public during school hours. Thank you.
Very much.
Vicki Graylin.
Hi, I'm Vicki Graylin, and I live in Kenmore. Last month, when I spoke here, I suggested that the city join the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. And just before I came to the meeting, I filed a citizen action request that the city do this. I think the greatest gift we can give to our children right now is to do as much as we can to prevent climate change. I believe we're more effective when we join together. Our neighbors Kirkland, Redmond, and Shoreline are members, along with 10 other municipalities. Let's be number 14. Sure, it's a few more meetings a year, but I think it's worth it. So my second concern this evening is the private use of fireworks on the 4th of July. I see in our new police chief's report that the Kenmore 4th of July is part of the community service portion, and I do attend that, and it's beautiful. But in my neighborhood, at 73rd and 204th, there are some years when the private fireworks create so much smoke that the next morning, the streets look like they're encased in fog. Last year, not so bad. I think people should have fun and celebrate the birth of our republic. However, the level of private fireworks can be extreme. It distresses wildlife and domestic animals. It distresses combat veterans. It can cause lifelong injuries in children and adults. When I called 911 last year, I was told that a police officer has to be actually present and witness the fireworks being used for a complaint to be filed. I would like to see some kind of plan from Pete Horvath to somehow reduce the use of private fireworks on the 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graylin.
Phyllis Finley.
Good evening. Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. I was interested in last week's presentation regarding the Squire's Landing development. I didn't really know anything about it, except for the pre-election blurbs, and how those blurbs translate into reality don't always match. I was impressed by the design process, the financial, environmental, and social details. As the presentation proceeded, I was struck by how different this process has been from another development I've been interested in, the St. Edward's State Park Sports Complex Development. I was taught that when you use something of someone else's, you should treat it the same way you would treat your own. I was baffled by six particular areas of difference. Number one, the parking lot. Squire's Landing, reduce size of upper parking lot to reduce wetland buffer impacts and preserve vegetation. Awesome. St. Edward's, seek variance to destroy 90% of wetland buffer, remove trees to increase parking. Number two, partnership. Quote, "Great model of partnership between KAWAK, KAWAK, and city." State-owned property. Twice the council has failed a second council member Marshall's motion to begin exploring the partnership with the school district for field usage. Please do not squander your precious staff time investigating current school usage ball fields. We know that, it's old news. Instead, how about using this precious staff time to investigate underused fields and why they're underused? Number three, activities program. Again, quote-unquote. "Agreements won't inhibit the rest of park users from freely enjoying and using the park," Squire's Landing. St. Edward's ball field will need to be fenced, and others will have to be kept out to protect the artificial turf. Wetlands. Ecological constraints helped decide how design would move forward, which included major changes to the first draft. St. Edward's, the design has moved forward in spite of ecological constraints. Dollars, number five. A huge amount of money is being devoted to mortgage for a few dragon boats and a safety boat. This only serves a small population of Kenmore. St. Ed's. An even more huge amount of money is being spent for a very tiny population of Kenmore residents, mostly white, middle-class, little boys and girls, preventing surrounding communities from using the ball field. The budget for St. Ed's seems limitless. Finally, grants. Kenmore owned property, the city apparently has applied for and is submitting grants to be in for the May 1 deadline. With St. Ed's, the city doesn't have enough time or money to devote to the complexity of preparing and submitting such grants. I urge you to use the same concern with the property you don't own as with the property you do own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Mr. Rollanda, thank you much for the, for the information, or I should say, Commissioner. Those of you here from Morelands, Kenmore is very, very concerned about our children. Our children come first in about everything that we do. We are very, very concerned for their safety. The area the children play on is a city park. The people have paid for that park. People want to use that park. We are working with the school district, and I know the city manager is involved with the school district, in trying to make sure we have a safe environment for the kids. So I certainly understand your concerns. We are working with the school district. We want to continue to work with the school district to make sure that there is a safe environment there for our children. Ms. Graylin, thank you very much for your comments. The fireworks are outlawed in Kenmore. The police, unfortunately, the few officers that we have, protect us very well from crime in that we have one of the lowest crime rates around. However, to be driving up and down the streets looking for fireworks may not be the best use of their time. And I know that I'm as frustrated as you are on the 4th of July, because we've got a great fireworks show that we put on out there, along with Lake Forest Park, and so there's lots of opportunity. And I wish we could do something, but if, and I understand that you're calling, and that's the best thing to do is call, but the officers do have to see it. Ms. Finley, Mr. Carlinsey, could you please comment on some of the things that was said, and certainly on grants, or not being interested in grants, and how we have applied and how we have gotten in things?
What is a specific question I can respond to?
Ecological constraints helped decide how design would move forward, which included major changes to the first draft. St. Edward's, the design has moved forward in spite of ecological constraints. Dollars, number five. A huge amount of money is being devoted to mortgage for a few dragon boats and a safety boat. This only serves a small population of Kenmore. St. Ed's. An even more huge amount of money is being spent for a very tiny population of Kenmore residents, mostly white, middle-class little boys and girls, preventing surrounding communities from using the ball field. The budget for St. Ed's seems limitless. Finally, grants. Kenmore owned property, the city apparently has applied for and is submitting grants to be in for the May first deadline. With St. Ed's, the city doesn't have enough time or money to devote to the complexity of preparing and submitting such grants. I urge you to use the same concern with the property you don't own as with the property you do own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Mr. Olender, thank you much for the information, or I should say commissioner. Those of you here from Morelands, Kenmore is very, very concerned about our children. Our children come first in about everything that we do. We are very, very concerned for their safety. The area the children play on is a city park. The people have paid for that park. People want to use that park. We are working with the school district, and I know the city manager is involved with the school district, in trying to make sure we have a safe environment for the kids. So I certainly understand your concerns. We are working with the school district. We want to continue to work with the school district to make sure that there is a safe environment there for our children. Ms. Grayland, thank you very much for your comments. The fireworks are outlawed in Kenmore. The police, unfortunately, the few officers that we have, protect us very well from crime in that we have one of the lowest crime rates around. However, to be driving up and down the streets looking for fireworks may not be the best use of their time. And I know that I'm as frustrated as you are on the Fourth of July because we've got a great fireworks show that we put on out there, along with Lake Forest Park. And so there's lots of opportunity. And I wish we could do something, but if, and I understand that you're calling and that's the best thing to do is call, but the officers do have to see it. Ms. Finley, Mr. Carlinsy, could you please comment on some of the things that were said, and certainly on grants, our not being interested in grants and how we have applied and how we have gotten and things?
What is a specific question I can respond to?
Well, there was five different things that she said. She was looking at comparisons between what we were doing in Squire's and what we're doing in the ball field, with the ball fields, six things. And so one of them was how we're busy and don't have time to do grants for the ball fields, but we do with Squire's. And there was a number of other, I think, inaccuracies, and that's what I wanted you to address them for.
Yeah, I didn't come prepared to talk about this tonight.
Okay, fine. If you could get back with her, please, and try to clear up some of the comments that were made, it would be appreciated. Yes. Oh, yes, yes, Ms. Byer. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Mr. Carlinsy, could you please have somebody get in touch with Ms. Byer and see if there's something we can do about making entry and exit to her property?
Yeah, we have a way for citizens to let us know about concerns like that. We have a citizen action request. There's a button you can push on our webpage, but I actually recommend that she sticks around tonight because we're going to be talking about parking on Eightieth and bike lanes on Eightieth tonight. So stick around.
All right, next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Shrubnik moved it and Deputy Mayor seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? The consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 2017 Annual Police Report. Chief Forbath.
I'm here to present to you just some highlights from the 2017 Police Services Report. Many of you know, and some of you who came new to the council may not, the City of Kenmore contracts with the King County Sheriff's Office for Police Services. As such, all officers assigned to the City of Kenmore are King County Police deputies, but they are assigned to the City of Kenmore. So what you receive there is dedication to the city. Personnel are assigned here on a daily basis. They stay for a minimum of three years when they're assigned. And by doing that, you receive line from your officers. You're not receiving a new officer every day. You have officers who get to know the businesses, get to know the terminals in the area and what their habits are, what they like to hide out, what they like to do on a daily basis. Also, as part of contracting with the Sheriff's Office, you receive a large pool of officers should we have an emergency in the city and need to draw upon immediate backup. And those officers are trained the same way as we are. So they'll come from Shoreline, Arnders, coming over, as well as Woodville, and then the unincorporated patrol districts outside of Woodville. Will also draw upon Mottel and Lake Forest Park in a major incident. But having those same trained officers that we know and we work with on a daily basis helps us to deal with a major situation. Additionally, if our officers are on vacation or out sick due to injuries or maternity or maternity need, we're able to draw upon a large pool of officers to backfill, again, from Shoreline, unincorporated King County, and all of the King County partner agencies to backfill officers. So for instance, I have a deputy that's been out on a long-term injury to post backfill not only to my officers, but also to officers King County-wide within the King County Sheriff's Office to help fill that vacancy while he's been out. Furthermore, we have the expertise of specialized units. So if we have a major accident that's involved in the city, I can call upon my major accident response and reconstruction team from the King County Sheriff's Office. These are officers that are specially trained in investigating major accidents, accidents that may involve severe property damage or even death. We have the ability to call upon and we use our specially trained officers who are trained to follow marine incidences, covered groundings, folks that are in distress, et cetera. We have the ability to call upon Guardian One should we need to search for a suspect. Have the ability to call upon specialty units for cyber defense cases, as well as major homicides, homicides, all are major. And our major crime unit which investigates bank robberies and furthermore, when we have a vacancy within the department, within the City of Kenmore, I have the ability to select better-trained officers than hiring a new officer from straight out of the academy to ask for experience. Generally, when I bring somebody into the City of Kenmore, they'll have a minimum of one year of experience already on the street. Most have more than two to five years before they come into the contract city. And then we also have the cost-sharing benefit that being a contractor at the King County Sheriff's Office, the City of Kenmore doesn't have to carry the entire cost of policing. Partner closely with the City of Shoreline for the use of their facilities, capitalizing, using evidence storage, having shared supervision. So when I achieve them not here in the city, I have control officers. We have the sergeants up in Shoreline that monitor what our officers here do. What you see here is a quick breakdown of how our city is broken up into reporting districts. The portion of the Semamish Flu or Semamish River there, and then to the south, along As you notice, in 2017, our police calls, the calls for service went up by approximately three hundred calls. It has continually risen every year, and that's pretty standard for any area within King County as population grows. At the same time, our population has grown by about the same amount, approximately three hundred persons. Part one crimes, these are our violent crimes, and this is a breakdown for thousands of people within the city. These are burglaries, felony crimes, which are rapes, robberies, burglaries, auto thefts fall into this category. And as you'll notice, in Kenmore, which is the dark blue, our crimes went up, just, oh, I'm sorry, went down from fifteen to fourteen per thousand person.
Excuse me, I have a quick question. So I see that you've got Maple Valley, Covington, Newcastle here as comparison cities. How did we, how did we come down to those as being our comparative cities for this report?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How did we choose those cities to be?
So those are the Parker cities within the King County Contracting Services.
Some of them that match our population.
Match our population.
Or are close to our population. Also, what we'd really like to get is next-door neighbor city data, but they report crime data differently than we do. It's a federally mandated way of reporting crime that cities around us have already been doing, and we're going to be phasing into that over the next year or so. Once we have that same methodology of reporting data, then we'll be able to compare ourselves with our next-door neighbor cities. We're probably, well, we need to get a full year's worth of data under our belt and then be able to look at it after that. So we're at least a year away from being able to compare ourselves with next-door neighbor cities. Okay, thank you.
To add to that, there are two different, it's almost apples and oranges between the two reports.
So these are, these are the non-neighbors? Okay. And because, and one of them is quite different in population. So I had exactly the same question as Nigel. So it makes it a little bit tricky to understand these.
I have a question on that. So since it's on a per capita basis, and Shoreline's also a contract city, if I recall, with King County, so could that have been included in here as a, since it's a north end city?
It could have been, however, the best manager of Morelands who reported this was the same population size. And Shoreline is approximately seventy thousand, seventy, eighty thousand, so.
I think you got them.
I just put this in here to show and kind of break that the City of Kenmore has had zero homicides and so we're working, knocking on wood, we will continue to do so. Our rape calls, this includes all violent sexual assaults, but does not include statutory rape, so that's where no force was used and the victim was under the age of consent. As you notice, since 2015, our reported rape calls have dropped. Our burglary calls have also gone down over the last year. We had a hundred and two in 2016, and this includes both the commercial and residential burglaries, forced entry and non-forced entry. Breakdown, I did notice, and I'm going to have to get back to the city council, that landowners don't match that previous graph. I took these from our actual reports that were written. Out of sixteen, we had thirty-seven forced entry, both commercial and residential. In 2017, we had twenty-five that were reported. Unforced entries in 2016 were twenty-seven. The non-forced are just as it says, people left their doors unlocked or their windows unlocked or open. Garage doors have their left open in the middle of the night and have somebody walk in and steal something, but also fall under the non-forced entry. Our robbery calls also fell down. Thousand persons or. Best-in vehicles and attempted car trials, our car trials. You'll notice that these went up slightly, but not that significantly. This also went up throughout King County and the city that I compared this most. Coming from Semamish had a large spike in car trials over the last year. This increase is generally due to, and be improved through, patients put out to the public about not keeping valuables in their cars at night, locking their cars also. The biggest thing is not keeping valuables in their cars. I can do here in the city, outside and provided for officers to find and should keep a finding in, including home. Somebody, if you see the phone cord dangling in the car, they will assume that there's something in the car that's hidden and they'll go after that. Noticing that even phone charge cords have been stolen. Traffic management influence has also decreased over the last year, and this is just due to my addressable officers. Apparently, we realize I have been in conversation with the level to the City of Kenmore office, and they continue to address. Vehicle thefts also rose, and I took a look at these reports to try to determine if there was any one factor that led to this number, and there was. They broke down to people dropping their keys, getting blocked away from their car in the park and coming back to find a car gone, friends getting in the car from the house without permission. Unknown causes, they don't just have their keys, but it wasn't certain as to how the car was stolen. Not one thing that I can attribute as to why that increased. Notice our collisions remain about the same over the two years. And however, our citizen traffic complaints rose considerably, coming to us through both the City Cars Program, as well as through calls to the nine-one-one system and our lock through, followed up by officers. These are speaking links, our partying links, abandoned vehicles also fall under this, while it's just been not taken and trapped through my neighborhood. Touching on our special units that we can draw from, as I mentioned, Guardian One is one of those. We use Guardian One to help us search for lost people in the city. Guardian One also helps the Marine Unit, also says should we have a bank robbery or a suspect. Are those here in the city? Big racks for reconstruction, as I mentioned. Our Marine Unit, which patrols Kenmore Harbor, as well as all the residences along the water. And a little bit about our Kenmore Police Department, some of the highlights that we've done this year. We have a motor officer that's assigned to the City of Kenmore, and as our traffic events and as our weather improves, you'll be seeing him a lot more out in the field. We also have an officer dedicated there, who likes to be trapped, so when he's here, he's by the extra portion.
And Chief, my understanding is that when that motorcycle officer is part of the two minimum staffing, which is a minimum that we have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, that he does not operate the motorcycle when he's part of the two minimum staffing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So he only operates the motorcycle when he's the third or fourth officer on duty?
That is correct. This year, we had a couple memorable moments. Longtime employees with the Kenmore Police Department retired, Jerry Zorn, who was one of my favorites when I hired him twenty-six years ago, and Nick Nizer, who I worked with several times throughout those years. Nick was specialty, or specialized in firearm training, so he provided a lot of firearm expertise, both officers, as well as the King County Sheriff's Office. Now, you remember, the team, what tendency it left, flash and bolt, and that's that. But they have moved on, and we miss them. They're also involved in National Map Ed every year, and we put on a fair right here on the campus of the city hall. Incorporated special units for the Sheriff's Office, including the Marine Unit and location to throw off their tools and their, kind of make our civilians, our citizens, have their Kenmore Police Department also participates in the Target Zero program through the city, and as such, we have, we're able to hand out coupons to adults, as well as.
Kid Valley?
I'm sorry?
Is it Kid Valley?
Kid Valley, thank you very much. Kid Valley Burgers, for appreciation. If you see the kids wearing helmets or doing something safe, wearing heat pad, roller skating helmets here at the skate park or while bicycling, getting off their bicycles to walk or walk across streets. Anytime we see people or kids doing something that is favorable traffic-wise, we can hand out these little rollers to. Also, part, I'm sorry. Right, sir? Also participate in the movie nights here at Town Square, and Officer Boyer here with the kids. Officer Boyer is very well-liked by children of all ages and is involved with them at the movie nights, as well as at the Fourth of July fireworks at the lake. And he's now getting into a program with King County by mentorship to kids.
I saw, at our first movie night, I brought my daughter, who was nine at the time, and she was having a great time. He was playing with the kids, and I commented to my father-in-law, I said, "I really hope that's the only time that she runs from the cops." But they were having a blast out there. It was, he was, he was great with the kids.
He was, he was, he's one of my state troopers that came over. As I mentioned, we're also involved with the Kenmore Fourth of July at Lockwood Park. And I threw this in, this is kind of a fun thing, that if we have those snowmageddon to keep our sheriff's offices ready to loan us, they're still happy. We actually use this to take our tower technicians or radio technicians up to the rate of power we're going to run out of. But we do have that as a program. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Shubnik. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, you have one? Councilmember Shubnik.
I have a few, mostly, thank you for your presentation, and just, you're delightful to work with so far, so that's, that's great, just happy to have you on board. So all my questions relate to the companion report, some of which was highlighted here. There was a, an early table that showed Kenmore, kind of per capita officers and sworn per thousand. It looked like, am I reading correctly, I guess first, that we're one of the lowest cost per capita and sworn per thousand, which of course would go together, of any of those cities. Now, those are beyond just the contract cities, because SPD's in there, yeah, okay. Okay, is there, and so related to that, is there any concern or issue or threshold, you know, we're noticing that dispatch calls going up, is there any concern about capacity, given our number of officers?
That is something that I'd like to discuss with the city manager, and get back to the council on it.
Okay, yeah, okay, and then I was just curious, is there a relationship, it was on one graph, the relationship between the dispatch calls going up and the alternative call handling?
Yes.
I wasn't quite clear on what the alternative call handling is.
The alternative call handling is when somebody calls into nine-one-one and says, I hope on an officer to come out, but I didn't try to record over the call. Or, the sheriff's office also has an online reporting system, or any citizen can go online and fill out, ask them to review, or when they come on an officer to come out.
And they're, those are, just happen to be on the same graph, we don't think there's a relationship between one going up, one going down?
No.
No, okay.
As you notice over here, that is the rate pretty standard.
Okay. And then, just a couple little last questions, there was, I think it was toward the end, there's a list of the larceny offenses, and there was just a lot of acronyms, kind of in, in the future, I wonder if we could spell out some of them, just to make it a little easier for the reader, so that's a little thing, and then the-
All major levels.
I'd have to look, but it was, it was not at the beginning, it was toward the more detail. And then the last question is, it looked like about half of the adult felony arrests are drug violations, which I know is not a surprise to people, but I'm wondering if any of those could potentially be diverted from arrest. I know, you know, SPD has the lead program, and, you know, various other ways that they're trying to deal with, particularly drug offenses, and in terms of diversion, curious your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that with the city manager.
Okay, yeah.
Our practice has managed to be up on prime in the city, so that we don't have a reference of those, that, knowing that we're soft and they can get away with it.
Question, Senator. Yes, Councilwoman Marshall.
So the immigration policy from our last sheriff was that the sheriff's office was not going to engage in immigrate, federal immigration enforcement, is that still the policy under the new sheriff?
Yes.
And then I had a very brief question, either for the city manager or yourself, just purely theoretically, if we were looking at some way to maybe address Ms. Grayland's concern about the extra fireworks, would that mean then potentially more funding for another patrol, or it just means more enforcement?
Yeah, could be a little bit of both, additional, that would be one of the time.
Thank you.
Can I jump in on that question? So, yeah, we can, we can get you data on the extra patrols that we provide on the Fourth of July. Police officers are in high demand on the Fourth of July, and so we try to get as many to volunteer as we can within our local police force, and then there's other sheriffs, sheriff deputies that we try for, but they're often being asked to be serving in other cities, so finding available officers on the Fourth of July can be a challenge. But I do know that we, we do have extra patrols that night, I just can't remember the number of extra patrols, but we can definitely get you that. In my, my experience, there's two, two things you can do to really deter illegal use of fireworks. One is just tons of signage and education. We're already pretty aggressive on that, we put up banners throughout the city, we put it in our newsletter, we do e-news, so we do quite a bit of education on that. Another way, though, is we've, I've seen in my, in my career, when police officers actually cite and arrest people, word gets out pretty quickly for next year. And I've seen a correlation between aggressive citing and arresting, and, and better behavior the following year. It's kind of hard, though, because you might have a mom and a dad out in their cul-de-sac with their six-year-old kid, and they're lighting off fireworks, and a cop comes and puts their parents in handcuffs, and, so that's, that's kind of how word gets out, when you see dramatic situations like that. But those are the two things, just aggressive education and real enforcement seem to be the best ways to get the numbers down.
Any other questions? Thank you, very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda is the City of Kenmore Local Road Safety Plan, Mr. Shock.
city, and here to present on the local road-
Is light on the microphone on?
Oh, is it not?
I don't know, just is the light on or off?
Oh.
Okay, I can't see it.
Okay, I'm gonna look closer, there we go. All right, so, that's a safety issue. All right, so, the local road safety plan. So, just a quick outline, I'll go over what exactly the local road safety plan is and why we created it, a couple of highlighted projects for council feedback, and then I'll go into some next steps following this meeting. So the local road safety plan is something that we developed in response to a WashDOT call for grants, something they're requiring for some of their grant programs this year, but it turned into a really good exercise to look at our collision data and some ways that we can improve on our roadway safety in the city. So it is a database analysis of our past collision history, and for what I'm presenting to you tonight, it does not include five-twenty-two, as it's a state highway controlled by WashDOT between the curbs. We are going to be working on an additional similar report for five-twenty-two specifically, to see if there's anything that either we can do, or we can bring to WashDOT's attention on five-twenty-two as well. It's over a five-year period that ends December thirty-first, 2016, just because WashDOT goes back and verifies all the police reports for that year, and then certifies the data about mid-year. So based on what they had certified, when they were able to produce this information for the various cities, because this is open to jurisdictions throughout the state, they put the cutoff at December thirty-first, 2016. So as I said, it's a plan to develop, or to address historical collisions, but also to look at risk factors for future collisions that might be similar in nature. So in that five-year period, we had six-hundred-and-fifty-nine collisions on Kenmore roads, other than five-twenty-two. Eighteen percent of that, about just under three percent resulted in a serious injury or fatality. All of our fatalities were non-motorized users, two pedestrians and two bicyclists. And then this data was obtained from WashDOT, but verified with local records. Monthly, I enter the collision reports from the police into a local database, so we can keep track, without submitting requests to WashDOT constantly for our collision data. So after looking at all the data, and kind of poring through all kinds of numbers, and looking spatially where collisions were occurring as well, I came up with some priority contributing factors to collisions. So these are the three for level one, bicyclists and pedestrians, because all of our, all of our fatalities were non-motorized users, our overall rates of collisions involving bicyclists and pedestrians were slightly higher than the state average, but considering our more urban nature than some of the, the other cities that contributed to that data, that's not entirely surprising. And then driver distraction was certainly a, a level one thing that contributed to a lot of collisions, and that could be everything from things outside of the car, to simply not paying attention, to the, the electronic, the phones and such, which actually was a fairly small percentage compared to what the expectation or the perception would be. It was around fifteen to twenty percent of distraction collisions were due to electronics. So a, a second priority level of other collision contributing factors, head-on collisions, we actually had a very high rate of those compared to statewide average. Collisions with fixed objects, failure to yield, that can be to either pedestrians in a crosswalk, or to the proper car when making a turn. Exceeding safe speed, which can be both, just high rates of speed on the road, but also exceeding safe speed is cited by officers when someone is, is approaching a red light queue and hits someone from behind. Sometimes that's cited as exceeding the safe speed, which should be zero in that case, but it's not. Thirty-five mile an hour roadways had a lot of our collisions, so that's our arterials for the most part. And then pedestrian distraction was actually cited in a number of our collisions that involve pedestrians. A third priority level of items that, you know, were higher in the data, kind of stood out, but were not as intense in terms of serious injuries, were intersections, which is not entirely surprising, street lighting, so we had a number of collisions that happened on streets that did not have street lighting, horizontal curves, and then collisions involving So breaking these down into risk factor focuses, so this is looking at what contributed to previous collisions, and what we could address with some countermeasures to try and prevent future collisions. Our arterial roads without bicycle lanes, so this combines those thirty-five mile an hour roadways and bicyclists, so putting bike lanes on our arterial roads would be a countermeasure there. And these are in priority order, so, so the bike lanes on the arterials would be a high priority. Addressing our school walk routes and intersections on school walk routes, so filling sidewalk gaps, widening shoulder walkways, protecting them with curbs where possible, and crosswalk enhancements on walk routes to our elementary schools. Our downtown core pedestrian area, so kind of the, the cross formed by one-hundred-and-eighty-first and sixty-eighth, there were a lot of pedestrian collisions in that area, so kind of looking at, you know, what we could possibly do to improve that, we do have a lot of sidewalks and crosswalks, we have our pedestrian interval lead at this signal right out here, but still there were a lot of collisions. So a study to take a look at that, and also look at five-twenty-two and the crossing of that, as our downtown starts to kind of expand southward. Taking a look at our horizontal curves on the arterial and collector roads, those thirty-five mile an hour roadways, and making sure that we've got the proper markings, signage, and lighting, to reduce the risks on those. Intersections with peak period congestion, so sometimes congestion can lead to distraction and those exceeding of safe speed collisions. We do have a number of our collisions that are just property damage only, rear ends, things that happen when people just aren't paying attention because they're waiting in traffic, so trying to reduce the congestion and queuing at our red lights. Our speeds on our arterial and collector roads, so this is not using physical devices, this would be just using speed feedback signs, we have a number of static ones already in the city, but this would be looking at using some more mobile ones, so that it, it kind of keeps things fresh for drivers, they don't know, oh, that's, you know, that's the spot where I'm always passing the feedback sign, so we can move those around the city. Our trail and roadway intersections, so along the BGT where we have at-grade crossings, this was an area where we had a number of collisions, so looking at what we could possibly do, short of making each one an underpass, but what we could do to improve the, the safety for vehicles and for non-motorized users at these crossings. Our intersections on our residential and residential collector roads, we have a number of intersections that are at skewed angles, or aren't signed at all, so systematically looking at those throughout the city and seeing where we might be able to add signage, if there's a dominant traffic direction, or use some other different types of intersection treatments. Improving our street lighting. And then just our, our Target Zero, our continued education and enforcement, in addition to all these engineering changes, that's something that can really help with the, you know, the failure to lead, and the, or failure to yield, and the distraction for both the drivers and the pedestrians, is, you know, making sure that everyone's aware that the city considers it priority, and that we need to be aware of, of everyone on the road. So the goals of the local, local road safety plan are these numerical reductions in collisions by the end of a two-year reporting period, so that would be for collisions through the end of the year in 2018. So we'll have that data in 2019, and be able to update this report at that time, and see how we did. And we're going to be applying to WashDOT for that grant funding, to address some of these engineering, so we'll see if we can, can secure that funding. So I have four highlighted projects that fit into those risk factor focus areas that I wanted to bring to your attention. One of them is addressing a, a red light queuing situation at Sixty-Eighth and One-seventieth, so right by Rhodey Park. Right now, there's a no-turn-on-red that is posted from four to seven on weekdays, and it also, in those hours, it turns off the right turn arrow for traffic coming from One-seventieth and looking to go north on Sixty-Eighth. This is something that has been the subject of numerous citizen action requests, to address the congestion here, but there are concerns as well for Inglewood Golf Course, and being able to get out into that queue. From what I understand, historically, it was put into place because of traffic from One-seventieth kind of filling that queue all the way back for northbound Sixty-Eighth at those peak hours. So the solution is using an intelligent detection, what you're looking at here is a picture of the video detector that actually controls that signal, and I know those boxes are hard to see, but I'll kind of describe it more on this slide. So we can use that video detector to put a detection zone, so that the light can actually see how long the traffic is backed up, and if there is room, then it will allow vehicles to continue to turn right from One-seventieth on red, and continue to give them the right turn arrow. If that detection zone is full, then it will turn that off, and it will have the no-turn-on-red posted with the blank-out sign, as it is today. So just make it a little bit more intelligent, maybe get a few more cars out of One-seventieth during those peak hours, but still provide that protection for people coming out of Inglewood, and that first rush of cars going northbound on Sixty-Eighth from Juanita. So the second project, modification, minor modification, is at Sixty-Eighth.
Sorry, before you move on to this project, I believe our intent on this, on this One-seventieth red turn mod, or right turn modification, is sort to be kind of like a temporary or pilot type situation, where if it doesn't work, or if it doesn't have the intended consequences, then we can switch it back quite, quite quickly, correct?
Correct, this is all in the electronics of the signal, it's a computer flip, very little cost, little impact, we can just bag the no-turn-on-red signs. The no-turn-on-red that's out there is already the electronic that it just turns on at certain times of day, so it's a matter of just connecting it differently in the computer.
So you just, you just said we just put like plastic bags over the no-right-turn signs for now?
Yeah.
And so if this experiment does not work, then we can just easily remove the plastic bags. If it does work, and seems like it's going to be a good long-term solution, then we can just remove the signs completely, correct?
Correct. Yep. Correct.
I know you know I've talked to Rob about this intersection many times through the years, and there's numerous reasons why that was put in. I know you understand that because that's what your job is. And so I, one of my concerns is that we set a reasonable expectation for the community on this because if, when we broadcast what we're doing, I really hope there's really an emphasis on the fact that this is a temporary pilot program so that if it goes away, then all of a sudden, we don't end up getting, you know, hundreds of cars' requests through the city, you know, complaining about the city, you know, they don't know what they're doing, they already did, they made the change and then they changed it back or whatever. I just, I think it's really important because this will impact a lot of people that we're really clear on what we're trying to accomplish and what the expectations are. And I could probably find it, but I sent an email years ago to, I think, the city manager about all the different impacts, about why I believe that was set there originally. And there really are a multitude of reasons, and I hope, I just hope that we address this correctly and that it also doesn't lead to other issues. Because I know one of the things that will happen immediately is it'll make it a tougher cross for pedestrians crossing 68th from Rhodey Park. Because as soon as that red light goes off and you're allowed to make a free right, the drivers are going to concentrate looking left and looking uphill, and they're not going to see the pedestrians that cross there. And so that's just one little example that they're not going to, they don't look now, and you know that when they're trying to beat a light or they're trying to beat the rush of traffic, it's just going to make that worse. So there's all these little things that are small, but they add up to a big safety issue. Thank you.
And Councilmember Smith, so one thing I heard you say is in managing expectations, to make it clear that this is a test and that we may be able to, if it doesn't work, that we can switch it back.
Oh, was that a question or was that rhetorical?
It was a question because I think what your point is, is if we do it and then switch it back to the way it was, people can be left scratching their heads saying, what is the city doing? They're switching things around. But if we make it clear upfront that it's a test for an experiment...
Exactly. Because if we do it and we switch it back, it doesn't matter if they don't know upfront what happened, all they will see is we made a change and then we changed it back, and they'll look at it as a waste of city time, funding, planning. It'll be Brett didn't know what he was doing. It'll be all these other things that aren't fair because they don't, they won't understand the process of why we got to try, get to this pilot thing. And I think it's important that we at least have the information readily available so they understand what we're trying to accomplish and that it is a pilot. And is that fair enough?
That's a great point.
Councilmember Januski.
I was just curious if we want to do all our comments on each project as they come? Or if we're saving for the end or how you want to do it?
What do you prefer?
We can do it as they come, that's fine.
For this one, yeah, I echo the making sure people know that it's a pilot project and also making sure that the pilot goes long enough that people understand what's changed. You know, habits are habits and they take a while to break, so to see behaviors change, probably need to keep it for, I don't know how long, but just to make sure we keep that in our minds.
Okay. All right. So the second project, which also addresses queuing at signals and also something that's been addressed by a lot of citizen action requests, is a lane change at 68th northbound at 522. So when we made a lane assignment change at 68th and 181st, so that it's a left turn now in the left lane if you're going northbound, there has been a lot of lane shifting and jockeying for position for this northbound 68th because we have two straight lanes that kind of combine into one, and especially people trying to get into right aid and Safeway. So this solution would make that right lane at 68th a right turn only. So all straight ahead northbound traffic would be in that second lane over from the curb. So this would reduce the number of lane changes. People going into right aid can just get over and make their right turn. The other thing that this could help is that it will give more ability to give some green arrow time for that traffic, so people can turn right onto 522 with a green arrow. And that can also be coordinated with the pedestrian crossing so that it actually holds that traffic until the pedestrians are in the crosswalk before it gives them their green. So there's a lot of benefits to this change. It's a fairly minor tweak, but it has a lot of side benefits. And this one, again, we can make it a trial. It's a little bit more difficult just because there's more signage changes and maybe a little bit of on-street pavement marking that we have to make some changes to, but we can work on figuring out a way to make this just a trial project as well. Any questions?
No, thank you.
I have one.
Go.
The one on the left. For this one too, you're planning to monitor the queue lengths and everything after it's implemented and, you know, make sure that that straight line doesn't get so long that nobody can even get into the right lane?
Yeah, for sure.
Keep an eye on it? Okay, great.
Councilor Shervin.
And I'm assuming, I know the answer to this, but I mean, this would, this impacts 522, which we don't control, so is there any issue with changing how cars navigate 522? Do we need to...
I've been in coordination with WashDOT for about a year on this one, so, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
This doesn't really affect 522. It's more the jockeying for position to get into Safeway in that from that intersection, right?
Yeah, I mean, they, since WashDOT controls the signals, they would have to make the change and approve the change, especially for that right turn arrow for people going northbound.
You know, if you don't mind...
Go ahead.
I think this will also benefit 175th because if people know that's a dedicated turn lane, they won't, they'll be less apt to make that right on 175th to try to avoid being stuck in that queue.
Yeah.
So speaking of that, what is that going to do at 175th? Because you basically have two lanes, three lanes, right? You've got the two left turn lanes and the one that can either go straight or right turn. So is that going to mean you're going to be in that middle-left turn lane and then go into the straight-through lane?
No, the way that it operates today is that those two left lanes end up going to the two lefts at 522, and that one right-hand lane at 175th splits into the two when you get up to 522, so...
And that's the way you anticipate it?
And that's the way, yeah. There may be some changes in the future with the bridge project, which could extend how long that comes south, but for the time being, it'll just stay as one lane.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, there we go. Okay, so, and then two projects related to the risk factor focus of putting some bike lanes on our arterials. And I just want to be clear that both of these are intended to be low-cost, effective projects without moving a whole lot of curbs or adding a whole lot of pavement. So on 73rd Avenue, we have the room to remove parking on one side of the street, preferably on the west side, and then add bike lanes in both directions. It'll remove about 50 to 60 parking spaces on the west side, but there are a number of driveways and side streets on that side of 73rd that already have sight distance concerns. 182nd being one of the ones that I hear a lot about and I experience myself a lot that there's some sight distance issues there with the on-street parking. So as I said, no modification to the pavement width, and this is consistent with our 2015 comp plan as far as where we are planning to have bike lanes. So just a quick look at the section. So right now, we have on-street parking on both sides of 73rd with the vehicle lanes. It's fairly wide, about 44 feet curb-to-curb, so there would be enough room to put those two bike lanes, have two vehicle lanes, narrowed vehicle lanes, because right now we actually have 14 to 14 and a half foot lanes right near the elementary school, which is really wide. And then still retain the parking on the east side, which is actually where all the mailboxes are as well. So that's something that I hear about occasionally from the citizens is that everyone who lives on 73rd has to cross the street and kind of is standing in traffic to get their mail. So they'd be at least standing in a parking lane at this point.
Councilmember Januski.
Are we done?
Um, yeah.
So I like the idea of this, and there's going to be a lot of public participation on this project, I assume?
Yeah.
Because I've talked to a bunch of people who live on 73rd on this, and almost 100% of the feedback I get is, we already have to run across the road to get our mail, now we're going to have to run across the road every time we want to get our car, and you guys think that's safer for pedestrians. So just making sure that we have a, I know we have to balance the sight distance on the other side and everything, but I know that there's going to be a lot of concerns on that. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
What are the north and south boundaries of the project? I know it's in here somewhere, but I'm...
181st to 192nd.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Shervin.
Similar to Stacy's concern, they're already crossing the street. I mean, I like it in concept, what you're trying to accomplish with the bike lanes. I'm just wondering if maybe we need another crosswalk, which I know would be a significant modification, but it looks like there's seven blocks between 185th and 192nd without a crosswalk, which is, seems like a risk of pedestrians just sort of crossing without a crosswalk, because that's a fair distance to assume people are going to walk, get to a crosswalk. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. I can certainly take a look at that. We do try and keep the crosswalk spaced out somewhat, just because we don't want to have a crosswalk every block.
Yeah.
So that they don't become background. But yeah, I can, as part of this, putting in a crosswalk would be a possibility. It's not something that would make or break the project. Maybe around the 190th block, I know there's a cul-de-sac there.
Just out of curiosity, do you have any idea how many bicycles do you use, 73rd?
Just anecdotally, I see maybe a dozen a day.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I would propose a crosswalk at 185th. Frankly, we have the Tolt Trail going out that way. We have a lot of housing on both sides, actually, on the street, and we've got the school, and there's a lot of development going on on the other side of the street, and kids are going to all need to get over to the school, and they may not go all the way. It would give another option for kids to walk to school instead of going all the way up 73rd and then over. And I know at some point, long-term, long, long-term, we're looking at doing something with the Tolt River going on the other side there, so it'd be good to have that connection already in place.
Yeah.
Along that entire walkway, so...
There was actually a crosswalk installed at 185th as part of the neighborhood plans early part of this year. Yeah.
Okay, well then never mind.
I'm a little leery about new RRFB crosswalks right now, given the Federal Highway Administration's...
Yeah, it's back.
What's that?
They changed. We're allowed to use them again.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
That just came out like two days ago.
Oh, that's good news. Oh, what a relief. Okay, good, thank you, Brett.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And one more project that goes along with a public comment you heard earlier. Patty and I have actually already spoken about her concern with the parking, and I advised her to hold off for this. So on 80th, this would be the full length of 80th. Right now, we have a couple hundred feet of bike lane down by 522, and then this would start at that bike lane and go all the way to the Snohomish County line. And basically converting the existing wide shoulders to bike lanes in both directions and probably near the park that we're working on, around 192nd to 195th, would be kind of a combo bike-ped lane the way that we have on Juanita. So it's a staggering number of parking places because you're looking at the full length, 350 to almost 400, but realistically, that parking is not very well-used. There's about 20 to 25 vehicles mostly south of 183rd Street where there's those Ts and Ls marking the spaces on the street. I've been doing a lot of field views, and my intern Clayton, who actually helped me develop a lot of this report, we've been taking a look at it and just keeping track of how much parking is actually occurring out there, and it is mostly on that southern part. So again, a kind of a low-cost, effective alternative. We're not changing the width, we're just repurposing something that's out there. And there have been more than a couple of complaints with sight distance with the existing on-street parking, especially with those marked spaces that are south of 183rd. Quick look at the section. We have sidewalk in places along 80th. Some of our existing parking restrictions are because of the breaks in the sidewalk. We keep it available for pedestrians right now. So it's kind of telling that that actually trails off north of 183rd, that it's not even marked as don't park on walkway because it's never usually a problem that walkway's available. So the proposed section would leave the vehicle lanes where they are, narrow them where possible, and then keep those shoulders as those bike/pedestrian lanes.
Manager.
I just want to add, this won't be the first time that we took an arterial and eliminated on-street parking and put in bike lanes instead. That happened on Juanita, or Simon's Road. We did hear from the public on that. I remember hearing such things as, hey, I don't use the on-street parking very much, but on Thanksgiving, when my family comes over, we need that parking on Simon's Road. So we might be hearing something similar here on 80th where the typical residents don't park on 80th, but when they have their party or their Thanksgiving, family come over, then they may want the parking. But I think Brett, you're going to talk about public outreach and how you're going to give the public plenty of opportunity to know about this and comment on this.
Yep.
Yep.
Councilmember Januski.
So I'm in support of this idea, but can you talk just for a second on why you decided 80th would be where you'd want to put the next bike lane? Because it has such a straight road with such huge shoulders already. I was just wondering why you would choose that road over maybe some of the other arterials or other roads that might be windier and narrower?
A couple of factors. One is just the cost because it's an easy stripe and it's designated, so there's not a whole lot of cost involved with it. But also, regionally, I've been speaking with Bothell's Bike Coordinator, and 80th is one of the few at-grade intersections with the Burke-Gilman Trail. And looking at it from a regional perspective, they have a lot of bike facilities that kind of congregate at 80th. It's an easy way to get to the Burke, which then gets people pretty much anywhere they want to go on either side of the lake. So, yeah, that's one of the reasons to pick 80th over some of the others.
I'm curious, at-grade doesn't cross the Burke-Gilman Trail. It dead-ends at the Burke-Gilman Trail.
Right, but for cyclists, they can, if they cross 522 at that point, they're just, they're on the Burke at that point. If they cross at 73rd or 68th, they have to kind of go around and then down into the... It's not like it's a huge distance, but it's, they can just get right on.
Deputy Mayor.
I actually think 80th makes a lot of sense as part of our, the plan that was put together by the bicycle and ped safety folks a few years back. And also with it being as straight as it is, I think it's actually more dangerous for bikes to be in the lanes because people, they, people see this huge expanse of pavement and they just kind of go. So I think it's good, especially in a place like this, to separate out uses where possible. You mentioned possibly tightening up the lane widths, and I think that that could go, that could get us some progress as far as addressing speeding on 80th goes, because especially when you're coming downhill, it's really easy to get up to speed and, you know, especially there's nothing in front of you, just get moving. If we constrain it a little bit just with fog lines, it's surprising what that does to people psychologically, so...
Yeah.
I appreciate this project. I like where you're going with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Shervin.
I appreciate this project. I definitely heard sight distance issues when I was walking around talking to people on 80th, and I like the bike lane idea, but I had a similar question to Stacy. In the broader report, there was a lot of collision data in the appendix, and, you know, 61st really kind of came to the fore, much more so than 80th. There, I think there were out of the 600 and some collisions, literally one and no ped-bike were on 80th. There was only one collision, it was at the intersection with 522, and 61st had quite a few. So I was just curious, you know, comparing the need, the safety need, not just the sight distance need, but the safety need between the two streets, kind of how did we get to 80th?
We definitely have some concerns with 61st, but we have... We definitely have some concerns with 61st, but we have been working on a plan to address the sidewalks as well on 61st, so kind of looking at the non-motorized in that corridor as a whole. And a lot depends on, I don't know how familiar, but there's those curb extensions the whole way down, and those kind of restrict what we can do without removing them, because you end up with a very narrow bike lane at certain points, or, you know, whether you put it as a pedestrian lane. So, we have a number of alternatives that we were looking at with that report, but a lot of them are much higher cost than either of these projects.
Okay.
So, I think another way to say it is, Eightieth and Seventy Third are pretty low-cost, because we're just dealing with paint and making the road safer with paint, whereas 61st will actually be a pretty costly capital improvement to be able to make any substantial safety changes there. We have been using an engineering firm to look at options at 61st, and at some point in the near future, we will come back to with what the, what the possible options are there. It is, it's going to be, 61st is going to be expensive. There's no way around it.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, Brett, thanks for this update on Eightieth, too. And so, will it, will it take away all the parking on Eightieth between, or that's just north of Bothell Way?
Yeah, so there would be no on-street parking on it, or at least no on-street parking on the pavement. There are some areas that are off the paved surface, people have made gravel lots, they could still park there.
Okay. And because I remember when we made some parking changes there, gosh, probably, probably even three years ago now, I don't know how long ago it was, and I remember there was a lot of, a lot of people were upset about it, because it is pretty dense, as you know, with those condos and townhomes, and they didn't develop them planning for much on-site parking, and because of that, you know, I think, we'll probably hear from a lot of people on this, I think it's a good plan, but I think for some people, they don't, they may not have an option where they're going to park another vehicle, because if you can't park on-site there, there really is no other off-site place nearby, and that's, it's, that is an issue, I think. And so, I just, I don't think we should undervalue how important that is going to be to some residents, and I don't know what the answer is there, but if all those sites are eliminated, you know, it doesn't look too bad at 2:00 in the afternoon, but at 6:00, when those spots are filled up, that's a lot of vehicles.
Yeah, and I've been checking at night, and Patty's actually sent me a couple of pictures, and that there's maybe between half a dozen and a dozen cars on any given night using those spaces. So, yeah, there are certainly some residents that do use it.
And if I can just add to that, so, we're not asking you to decide to do this tonight, we're not deciding to do it. We're just giving you a heads-up, heads-up about an idea that we're going to take out to the community, and we're going to get the community's input on this idea, and then based on community input and safety factors, we'll figure out what to do next, whether we should go forward with it, or modify it, or not go forward at all, and we'll let you know before deciding, making a final decision. But it's, so those dozen to two dozen cars that are parked out there, when they learn that they're going to lose their parking, they can get pretty loud, and they, you know, 12, 20 people coming to a meeting with pitchforks and torches can make a big difference, so we'll definitely want to hear from them, and I just wanted to clear up front that this is not a decision point tonight. It's a, here's an idea that we're going to take out to the community, and Brett's going to talk about the outreach process in a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
How does, or can lowering speed limits be integrated into the plan? Just thinking about it, for instance, on 68th, in front of the timbers and a lot of the apartments with the high density, or even on Seventy Third, we're getting close to the school?
Yeah, on Seventy Third, just a preliminary look, south of 185th, if we do have the bike lanes on there, that would be an area I'd look to maybe lower the speed limit as we're coming into the downtown area, similar to where it drops on 68th. And then, any changes to the speed limit on 68th would probably be in coordination with the larger project going on there with the sidewalks and the bike lanes.
And we also lowered the speed limit on Eightieth.
Yeah, yeah. It's been lowered from 40 to 35.
Yeah. Councilmember Smith, okay. These are two really great projects, and I do strongly support increasing the opportunities for bike lanes and that. I'm just concerned up at 192nd, because we've got a park coming on with no parking, and we're taking away the ability to park and allow people to enjoy the park when it opens. So, how do we plan on addressing that? Because that's a number of spot, spaces that are being taken away from park use.
Yeah.
So, what's the plans in making up those spaces for the park?
Debbie Benton and I were working together on the development of that park for that very reason. There is some space directly across 192nd for a few vehicles to park inside the park boundary. She and I were also looking at possibly, there's a driveway at the 195th block on the north side of the park.
Right.
That could possibly be used for some, some parallel parking as well. But she did have some feedback from her public meetings that a lot of folks wanted it to be kind of a walk, a walk-oriented park. The immediate community was much more concerned with having adequate walking facilities to get there, rather than places to park.
And I guess my concerns, then, if that's the case, is that we have all passive parks here on the north side of town. I mean, certainly Swamp Creek Park is passive, and if we're looking at this one being completely passive, there is really nothing available, except perhaps Linwood. There is a small one, Tot Park at the summit, but I mean, we're really limiting things. And I know there was talk of perhaps a frisbee course up there at that park, and I know that's still under development, and we haven't decided anything, but it just seems to me, by assuming it's going to be a passive park without any input, I mean, I don't know. I would hope that we'd have some opportunity for some active things there, and so, that's why I think parking may become important.
Can I ask you something?
Please.
Or maybe Brett knows, if I recall, in front of where the Brightwater Site is, though, isn't that a, that's an extra-wide stretch, isn't there even potential for on-street or off-street parking along, parallel to even where those bike lanes would go in that particular location?
Just north of there, where there's the sidewalk section.
Just north of 192nd, and you go up just a little bit on the, on the east side of Eightieth, isn't there, if I recall, it's wider than typical?
Yeah, I think it's actually north of 195th is where it is.
Oh, is it?
And, but there's a little bit directly across the street from it as well, like around 193rd-ish block.
Okay.
Yeah, there might be some opportunities to designate a five-foot bike lane and still have at least eight feet for on-street parking there.
Okay.
I guess there's a number of people that have been really looking forward to that park opening, and it is quite limited, but I certainly want people to be able to get to it.
Can I add a thought on that, Your Honor? So, I think when funding comes available to substantially improve the park, I think then you could talk about bringing in added parking and really making it a park that more people could drive to. But what we're looking at in 2019, and we're going to try to work this into the budget that we propose for next year, is to just do what we can, at least minimally, just to get the park open, and try to use that small parking lot that's there. And so, along those lines, until we get funding to substantially improve it, it would be thought of as more of a neighborhood park that people walk to for the most part. But when the time comes, once we get a handle on the walkways and waterways projects, and we know what those are going to cost, and have those under control, then we can talk about applying for RCO, or I should say, state grant money, and possibly a city match to make the park more active, including more parking. So, that's, that's kind of my thought, and feel free to argue back with me, but that's kind of my thought on that park.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, if this becomes sort of a neighborhood park, we've got the summit that's sort of a neighborhood park, and we've got Linwood that's sort of a neighborhood park, you know. Rododendrum Park is a park that people actually drive to, because there's a lot going on there, and certainly on the weekend, you know, Morland's gets done, and St. Edward's is not ours, but that's, and Loggum. So, you know, it's like, all the activity's there, there's not much here for the kids and that to get out and just have fun in. So, anyway. Sure.
On that, so where the new East Creek Village plat went in on the hillside, just directly north of the park, that entry road that comes directly off of Eightieth, is that, that's now public road and public ride-away, and so, is that wide enough to have parking along there at all?
I don't know if that one is. I know 190th is wide enough to have some parking.
Okay.
And then, I think there's some space on 192nd as well, on the north shoulder, right across from the church. It might only be three or four spaces, but there'd be some parking there as well. There's also that cul-de-sac that's just north of 192nd on the west side, even if there's no on-Eighthieth parking that can fit there, there might be some space in that cul-de-sac as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, and there may also be, I mean, that's a good reminder that there's a church there that is not used every day, and, you know, we could think about shared parking potentially, like we do in the other, with the other churches that are used for park and ride.
So, as Rob said, presenting all of this to you is just kind of a heads-up, that we're going to be taking all of these to the public. This is our new Public Works, Public Involvement Matrix, that kind of addresses all kinds of our different projects, traffic, CIP, and just what we, kind of our menu of public outreach, ranging from postcards to door hangers to public meetings, open houses, everything. So, we'll be following this for these projects and everything into the future. So, the plan is for all four of these projects to hold open houses. They may be combined open houses, but to hold open houses and, you know, advertise them quite well, especially to the people on those streets that are affected with the on-street parking, and get that public feedback, and then at that point, make some possible modifications to the projects, you know, keeping, retaining our project goals, very similar to what we had with some of the changes earlier in 2017, where we, you know, tweaked the projects, but we kept the main goal of, you know, either pedestrian safety or bicycle safety, and keeping those facilities, but still addressing people's valid concerns. So, following those open houses, all four projects, I'll bring them back to the council and give you the, an idea of what feedback we received, and for final approval for implementation. Depending on, you know, the length of the process for those open houses, and, you know, maybe some, some funding, especially with the striping projects, the further we get into summer, costs tend to rise. Also, the two bike lane projects are going to be part of our WashDOT grant funding application, so if we're selected for those, we may end up delaying their implementation until next year, when those grant funds are available.
Councilmember Januski.
Just one last comment on the organization of this document. I really like it. It's a great document. It's a really long document. What would have helped me a lot more is if the maps, because I'm not great on the cross streets on everything, if the maps were actually in the sections instead of all at the end. So, if you reorganized it anyway, it would have saved me a lot of scrolling to try and match up cross streets with the maps.
Okay.
That's a great document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I would also like to compliment you on, and just a lot of really good information. It was, it was actually really fascinating stuff to read, and there were some interesting stats and different things, and I know you've put a lot of work into all this, and so I just want you to know, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to mention, not just this report, but all the work that's gone into pedestrian and bicycle safety over the last four years. You know, you as a council directed us to make it a priority, and you put the resources into it, and a lot has happened over the last four years. A lot of changes have been made, some of them small, some of them big. Brett Schalk has had a lot to do with most of those changes, and I think we are actually a different city now than we were four years ago, and I think the data shows it as well. I can't prove it, because it's hard to prove prevention, but it's quite possible that these efforts have saved a life or two over the last four years. It's quite possible that they've saved people from serious injuries. We'll never know for sure, can't prove it, but numbers are down. So, I just want to publicly thank you as the council for making this a priority and having the guts to put the resources into it, and for Brett for making it happen, and my other coworkers as well.
Yes, I have, along those lines, a couple visuals to show. We're going to be putting up these signs, so this is our Bike Friendly Award. We're going to put them up on the Burke-Gilman. Bike-friendly community. Also got our Walk Friendly Bronze Award.
Your Honor, would it be okay if we actually, I don't think we brought a camera, but could we actually stand in front of the flags and take pictures of you all with those plaques?
Sure.
Because I'd love to get that photo in the next newsletter. Is it okay to take a quick break and take pictures?
Councilmember Johnson got ahold of me at the last Sound Transit meeting and complimented us on what we're doing in our community for bikes, so it is being noticed.
I've been giving a couple of presentations on what we've done lately, and there are a lot of cities that are, a lot of city employees that are impressed that there's a council that's that supportive of pedestrian bike safety.
So, do we, you've got your cell phone camera, right?
Less than five minutes this entire day.
Next item, municipal code amendments related to school impact fees. Ms. Benton, Community Development Director, and Ms. Anderson.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, I have to say, so, but we're here tonight to continue the discussion about collection of school impact fees. If you recall, the city received a letter in January of 2017, asking the city to reimplement collection of impact fees. And January of this year, we had an introduction to the topic, and we had members from the school district, and they're in the audience tonight as well. Tracy Rogstad from the Capital Facilities Program, and Denise Stifson, their legal counsel. And at the January 22nd meeting, the direction was to move forward with the code amendments for collection of impact fees. But before we can write those amendments, there are some policy issues that we need direction from, and in your agenda packet, there were five questions that were outlined, and we would like to have direction this evening and a response on those five questions. like to have direction this evening and a response on those five questions. So I'm going to ask Lori to start with the first one, which is how much should the amount be for school impact fees?
Good evening. So as we go through the five questions, I anticipate giving a little bit of background, hopefully more condensed than was in your agenda bill. And then as Debbie mentioned, the school district representatives are here who can help with questions if there are some that I cannot help with. So the school district, based on their capital facilities plan, is asking for impact fees of $10,573 for new single-family construction and a $0 impact fee for multifamily. And they explained that at your last meeting on the topic in January. While the city can't charge an impact fee higher than what the calculation would be, the city does have the ability to decrease the amount of the fee. So we compare that with the city's transportation impact fee for single-family, which is $9,604, and the current park impact fee, which is $2,642. Both the park and transportation impact fees are assessed for multifamily development. The school district will be looking at multifamily development as they go into their 2018 capital facilities planning process. So they may be addressing that later this spring. So the three jurisdictions in the North Shore School District that have adopted school impact fees for the district have approached this issue differently. King County adopted the requested 2016 fee of $10,563. And I want to point out that the current number is 500, $10,573 last year, it was $10,563. So it looks like, why, why is there a difference? But that was based on the calculation. Snohomish County, on the other hand, adopted a $7,000 fee in 2016 and then approved an increase that will take effect in April to $10,563. And I talked with the Snohomish County staff and, and they did that to avoid a quick rise in fees from zero to $10,500 plus. The city of Bothell initially adopted a $7,000 fee, but did increase it. This is new information. I, I talked to their staff, they increased it to $10,000 at the beginning of the year. So Woodinville has not yet adopted school impact fees and Kirkland and Burien, while technically in the district, don't have development that would contribute to the schools. So the no-school impact fees are being assessed. So I guess the question is, what is an appropriate fee? Again, the school district request is before you and you can see that different jurisdictions have approached it differently.
Deputy Mayor.
I mean, like a lot of people and some of the folks in the audience, I moved to Kenmore because of the schools. And I was surprised when I got here to find out that we didn't have impact fees and that the district hadn't asked for that. You know, one of the main tenets of the Growth Management Act is that growth pays for growth. And here we have a calculation where growth will only pay for one half of growth. With the price of single-family new development being what it is, I frankly am not too worried about adding another $10,000 to the cost of a new single-family home. I might be more sensitive if we were talking about multifamily and things that would actually be considered affordable, but single-family new construction is not almost ever meant to be an affordable option at this point in time in this area. So I want to support our schools and I'm, I'm happy with fulfilling their request.
I guess I have a real concern here, serving on the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, in that by 2040, we're 244,000 units short of housing. We're talking about making it easier to build ADUs. We're talking about making it effective, more cost-effective to build 800-square-foot houses, to try to get people into housing. And I don't think it's unrealistic to, to have affordable housing as a single-family home. I'm concerned that we are pricing people out of housing. I mean, just looking at this, I'm looking at $10,000 plus $9,000 plus a park impact piece of $2,000, we're close to $20-some thousand dollars just in fees to build a home. So I am a little concerned about that. Councilmember Marshall.
I think the mayor makes a good point. However, I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Herbig and especially, I think, growing up here and having seen the pace of development my entire life and even after the, as I understand, the Growth Management Act was put into place and this tool was given to the cities, it was not utilized by the city. This, this will be the first time we're doing this, is that right?
No. We did actually collect fees early on. I think it was in about 2002 was when we stopped collecting fees and that was because the calcul, the, the school district makes this calculation and every year they made a calculation that they did not need to collect impact fees. So now they're saying, after doing the calculations recently, they say now it's time to start collecting impact fees for single-family development.
And how many years was it collected for? Do you know?
I think the collection was stopped in 2002, but I don't know if...
So perhaps at least from cityhood to 2002.
Right, so for several years, yes.
Okay.
I think it was 2002.
Okay. Yep, and, you know, I still feel that it's important to be able to fund our, our schools fully and perhaps in this market, we can look to other alternatives to address the, Mayor Baker's very real concern and the concern about affordable housing, but I think it's an appropriate amount for Kenmore as requested.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
I, I support this at the full amount, particularly given the lack of inclusion of multifamily into the calculation. I, you know, and we know that there are going to be school-age kids in our burgeoning multifamily environment here. We have a lot more multifamily development than we do single-family development. So we, we really do need to utilize the single-family development to make sure that we fully fund the needs of the district.
Councilmember Januski.
I support at the requested level of the district. It looks like most of the cities are going pretty close to what the district has requested. They've done a lot of research, they've done a lot of calculations and I guess for us to just arbitrarily decide that data isn't good and we should do less, kind of, I, I don't have enough information to, to do that, I guess, myself. So I would, I would want to keep it at the requested amount.
Deputy Mayor.
The mayor brought up ADUs earlier. This, would this apply to ADUs?
No, it would not.
Would it apply to the DDU's?
It doesn't apply either to detached or attached ADUs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification because ADUs are a very important strategy to affordable housing. Councilmember Smith.
I also support the full amount. I do think it's inevitable that every cost that we add to the construction makes it less and less affordable, but there's no detached, single-family housing, new construction that's going on in this city that I'm aware of that's probably even less than 750 or 800,000. And so if you look at it a percentage of what that is and the fact it does exclude and we got a good explanation on the exclusion of, of multifamily and townhome development, which actually I find kind of surprising that a lot of, because so much of our future development will probably be more and more townhomes, so it seems like there should be an inclusion in there. But I just feel like this is one of those things where we, we're either going to pay for it now or we're going to pay for it later and it makes sense considering the existing residents have already supported and paid for a lot of the infrastructure in place with the schools that, that the, this, this gets funded by, at a small, it's a small amount to help get funded by the, the new construction. I think it's a good idea.
I guess one of the trends that we're starting to see here is developers coming in and buying up 68 lots and putting in smaller houses with a smaller footprint, 800 square feet, but less, less lot size to go along with, so the land, the cost of land is reduced. They can put more units per acre in more or less cottage-style housing. And I, I guess I just hate to see future development like that become cost-prohibitive in Kenmore because of, but I'd certainly agree with, the, the houses are going up now for 700, 800,000, of course, that makes a lot of sense. But I'm just concerned with the future and trying to provide affordable housing because just because somebody makes $15 an hour shouldn't mean that they can't afford a house that they have to live in, an apartment. So, yeah, I just want to make sure people are taken care of. So any further? All right. Chair will entertain a motion then to, to adopt these, or no, you're not looking for that, you're looking for provide direction.
It's direction, so I think I will take the direction that the fee will be the full amount as requested by the school district and acknowledge that you have concerns when we're looking at affordability for housing.
And I know that the Planning Commission is looking at affordability and whatever and, you know, if some of these thoughts could be given to the Planning Commission for what they're planning to present to us, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Can, can I ask a question on that? So if, because I know we've talked a lot about small, like cottage housing and whatnot. So in, in something like this, if, if, do we have flexibility in the future that if we were to say all-new construction, less than 1,400 square feet is exempt from that? Is that even possible? I mean, I don't know how, what we're allowed to do on something like this, but is this an all-or-nothing thing or can we actually create a policy that addresses more of the affordable housing component as we get into that over the next year and two?
So the, there is an allowance for low-income housing, but that's not quite the same thing. I would think that that might be something we could ask the district to look at in terms of, the way they do their calculations is based on student generation.
Mm-hmm.
So for example, if it were a cottage housing development, maybe there could be some analysis of whether, you know, sort of what the, the student generation is from a development like that. I don't know. I don't think there's any prohibition on or, or strict regulations on what can or can't be exempted. I don't...
Because it does seem like it would be reasonable to at least maybe put a, you know, a 50% ratio or something that's, I'm just throwing that out as an example, but because if I recall in the discussion from the school district on why multifamily and townhome was excluded, it was because of improvement size and the number of bedrooms. And so if cottage housing addresses that exact same issue, what difference does it really make whether it's attached or detached housing?
So the second of the five questions, and this has to do with who, who takes on the administrative task of collecting the fees. So historically, when the city of Kenmore did do the fees, the applicant had to go to the school district and pay the fee and then they would get a certificate to bring back to the city saying that they paid their fee and then at that point, the building permit could be issued. The, the draft interlocal that the district has given to us would say that the city, in fact, would take on the administrative role. It's easier for the applicant to come to one place, they don't have to go to the school district and then come to the city. The city would put the money in, in a fund and then probably send it monthly, send the money monthly over to the school district. So King County and Snohomish County both received the school impact fees directly from the applicant. Bothell has the school district collect the fees. So again, our neighbors have done it differently. And we talked with the director, the finance director, and she did not feel that the responsibilities would have a significant workload impact. So the council can decide whether you have a preference.
Senator Januski.
Are you allowed to charge some kind of minimal administration fee if they pay here and you have to do the work to send it over?
I, I think there is a provision to do that. I don't think it's very much, but it seems to me that that might be a possibility. I'll have to check that.
Just to be clear, it's the builder that's collecting these fees? That you're collecting the fees from? The developer?
Correct. Before the building permit is issued, the fee would have to be paid.
Councilmember Marshall.
I'd think that probably the developer would appreciate it in terms of one-stop shopping or ease the whole process to be able to pay things in, in one location as opposed to heading out to the new facilities up at Montevilla Parkway.
But I think there should be recovery of cost of staff time involved and because you guys are pretty busy anyway.
Well, I think that's a separate question. I think the first one is, is who collects? And if the direction is the city collects, then we'll then figure out then what the city could charge as an appropriate administration fee.
Councilmember Januski.
Does the city have a preference on how you would want this to go? This is kind of your work and your workload?
I, I don't know that we do. I, I would say that it may be more cumbersome to send someone somewhere else and then ask them to come back. It, it just...
More stops for them.
In terms of efficiencies, it's not ideal.
Okay.
So I guess we'll take that as general direction, that the city will collect the fee and staff will look into the possibility of adding an administrative fee on top of that. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, there are a couple, there are two things that go into the school impact fee process. The first is the ordinance that authorizes collection of the fees and the other piece of it is an interlocal agreement that specifies how the fees, well, the relationship between the city and the school district and who has the responsibility. I would say that in the draft interlocal, even if the city collects the fees, that the school district takes on the more potentially difficult task of doing refunds if those were ever required. So, you know, you can only hold impact fees for so long and then if, if they're not used, they need to be refunded. And, and that process, I think, would be more complicated. And in the draft, the school district has taken on that responsibility. Okay, so the third question is probably the most complicated and, and that's why I wanted to put the agenda bill up here so the audience can see it. And this has to do with the exemptions. So the question is, are the exemptions identified by the school district in the draft ordinance appropriate? So the first part of this, A through E, are the exemptions that are in the city's transportation and parks impact fee section. And then the second piece of it are the exemptions that are different or some are the same in the school district's proposal. And I'm just going to summarize, you don't need to read all of this, but if you had a specific question, at least you can see this in front of you. So the, the significant differences between the two sets are that first, Kenmore's exception for alteration, expansion, or replacement of existing residential structures is, is more broad than the school district's. The school district says you're only exempt if somehow there was damage or destruction of the home. In Kenmore's exemption, it's, it's basically that you're not creating a second unit, but you can certainly alter, modify, et cetera, your existing home and still be exempt from impact fees. The second significant distinction is Kenmore does have that exemption for low-income housing and other development activities with broad public purposes. An example of an exemption for broad public purposes is, for example, the exemption for the properties down near Brewer Row from transportation impact fees. So that we have used that broad public purpose... used that broad public purpose language. Kenmore also has an explicit exemption for accessory dwelling units, so it's really clear that those are not included. The school district, on the other hand, has some interesting exemptions for shelters, sort of temporary transitional housing, and also school impact fee exemption for senior facilities or even developments that have fifty-five and older restriction where younger kids are not permitted to live. So staff is recommending that the city's existing incentives be retained, that alteration and modification of single-family be allowed regardless of whether it's happening because there was some damage or destruction to the home. And then we're recommending that the district incentives for things like shelters and temporary or transitional housing be retained, and also for those elderly facilities or developments that have an age restriction, fifty-five plus, with no allowance for children in the development. So the last two exemptions that the district had, I don't think these are as significant, but I think they should just follow along. One is that if a project is converted into a condominium, that doesn't mean it's new units. It's so that makes sense. You're not really adding units. It's just an ownership structure change. And then they also have an exemption for projects which have already provided fees or land or a facility prior to the date of the ordinance. That kind of parallels an exemption that we have, but I wanted to make that clear. So any questions about that?
I support the staff recommendation on this.
Deputy Mayor? Okay. Councilmember Shrubnik?
I support it in general. I just wanted a clarification on the senior housing. It looks like the examples that are provided there are mostly facilities, which makes sense to exclude. I just am a little concerned with the clause, "Any type of housing units for persons age fifty-five and older." I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, not that we may not ever have them in our community, but, you know, communities that are single-family housing, that are full-price, restricted to seniors. To me, that doesn't make sense to have an exemption.
Well, it's more than just being fifty-five plus. You have to be fifty-five plus, and then there are constraints on the ability for children to live.
I understand. I understand. It's still, if we're talking about, I mean, there's a big difference to me between low-income and that kind of unit. I have a hard time exempting just because, I mean...
Right. I think the idea was trip generation, kid generation. That there aren't presumably kids from that kind of a development that would be attending the schools, and that's why the district had included that.
So if an older couple built a home?
In a specific development, this isn't just any older couple on any lot. It's a specific fifty-five-plus development. There are a few of those in the area. One of the mobile home parks, for example, down on the river is a fifty-five-plus community where kids are not allowed to reside.
Are we in agreement with staff recommendations on this?
Okay.
Looks like there's agreement.
All right. Fourth question is, when should the school impact fees go into effect? So for the past year, the development services staff has been advising people that the topic of school impact fees was under discussion. We knew at that time approximately what the fees might be based on last year's capital facilities plan. Those comments have been written up in the notes that are given to someone who comes in, pre-applications before you apply for your permit. So you're thinking about a project, you come in, the city talks about what are the standards and requirements. So folks have been advised of that, but there still has been some concern about the fees and whether they might affect the feasibility of a project. So there were a few, if the council is concerned about that, we had come up with three different options that might mitigate that a little bit. First one is delayed implementation of the ordinance. This would mean that the school impact fee ordinance was adopted, but it might not go into effect for some period of time to give applicants more time to vest their building permits. That's one approach. The second one, and I think we've already answered this question, is the gradual increase of the fees. So if the council wishes to go ahead with a full fee, this is not an appropriate approach. And then the last one was allowing an exemption for some previously approved zoning permits. This is not Platts or short Platts. This would be a case where a single-family home builder might have come in to have a pre-application, and they had needed some other kind of a permit. I'm thinking like a setback variance or some other type of a variance or zoning permit approval, a shoreline permit, something that they needed before they could move to the building permit stage. And then this regulation would go into effect after they'd received their zoning permit approval, but before they had their building permit. Again, presumably, all these folks have been alerted to the fact that the fees were going into effect, but that would be another way to approach the issue of advising someone about getting their building permit in quickly so that they don't get, have to have this fee assessed when they've made plans based on a different economic outlook. So I don't know if you want to address this concern or whether you feel like the fees should go into effect and folks will need to vest before the ordinance takes effect. Certainly, we'll have a public hearing before the ordinance goes into effect. I've already called the master builders to alert them to this issue, just as a way of letting the development community know more formally that this topic was being discussed.
Councilmember Smith.
You know, there's so much construction going on now, and since you've been advising individuals coming in for over a year or close to a year, and we've been discussing this, so in an open format, there's been no, the school district's been here, there's, there should be no surprise. So I have no problem with implementing it as soon as, put it this way, I don't see any reason to delay it.
Deputy Mayor?
Our school district needs the money. I don't see any reason to delay it myself.
Councilmember Marshall?
I wholeheartedly concur with both the previous comments.
Anybody else? All right.
Okay. So we'll just write it as a regular ordinance with no special provisions for that.
Other than the ones you've outlined here.
Right. Well, I was thinking of this one. There's one last question, number five. Hopefully, it's a really easy one. And that has to do with townhouses. So our zoning code says that townhouses are multifamily development, and our zoning code also has a provision in our single-family zones that says if you want to do townhouses, you can do that through a conditional use permit or in a plat that's designed for townhouses. So if townhouses are considered multifamily versus single-family, someone could potentially say, okay, I'm going to do townhouses on my lot in the single-family zone, so I don't have to pay impact fees. Is that a stretch? I don't know. This was raised by development services staff who actually had heard this concept from someone. But if you are concerned about that, then what we would do would be, in the impact fee chapter, we would say that townhouses are, in fact, single-family development for purposes of the school impact fee ordinance. We certainly would not suggest changing the zoning code definition. That would have a number of ramifications throughout the code, but we could make this clear in the school impact fee chapter. And we would actually recommend that you do that.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Okay. So that is, yeah, I would concur with the recommendation and, again, look at the ability of the city to potentially exempt, you know, low-income or cottage-style, you know, if there's a way to do that in the future as we look at affordable housing strategies.
Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I was reading something and listening to you and trying to... Did I hear the staff recommendation is not to make any changes to this exemption?
Well, I, my recommendation would not to make, would be not to make any changes to the zoning code, but in the chap, it's a separate chapter that we do make the distinction there, that townhouses would be considered multifamily, or I'm sorry, would be considered single-family development for purposes of school impact fees.
So townhomes are standalone?
No, they're attached.
So it's, okay, they're attached.
Right.
Okay, so it's not like a duplex or a triplex or anything else? It's a group of structures joined together that a number of families can live in?
A duplex or a triplex would be considered a townhome.
Okay.
You know, just to help the conversation, I mean, because I, obviously, I deal with a lot of this in my work, and, I mean, a lot of the townhouse development in our city, the stuff right around here, it's in the, you know, seven hundred thousand-plus range and oftentimes has three bedrooms, sometimes four bedrooms. That's, most of it's not four bedrooms, but I guess my point is, there are definitely houses that can house children just as easily as not, and so it would make sense to include it. However, I realize that, you know, when we get to, when you, when you look at the affordability side, oftentimes, when you're trying to build affordable housing, you're also looking for multifamily and attached, because attached is cheaper to build. And so there, you know, there is a downside on the affordability side. So it's kind of, it's not an easy decision.
Is that what's supposed to help the conversation?
Yeah, I know. Well, I realize that. That's why I'm actually struggling with it. But I can see it really...
So multifamily are exempt, but you're talking about how to figure out eventually to get multifamily in there. It seems to me this is new construction, like you said, seven hundred thousand or so per unit. I think it lends itself to be part of the impact fees. To me, you know, a multifamily dwelling is ten, twelve, fifteen apartments, not necessarily townhomes.
Well, you can, you can get a project with multiple townhomes in it, so it's just the style of development. So townhomes are kind of in a row, and apartments are stacked one on top of the other. But to Councilmember Smith's point, he was saying that his experience shows that typically townhomes are more comparable based on size to a single family in comparison to an apartment, which are typically smaller, have less bedrooms, less children. So I think that was his point.
Right. And I'm sort of agreeing with that and saying that...
The reason is, is basically, land is so expensive, so if zoning's going to restrict your height and you can't build six stories high, what are you going to do? You're going to try to make it as dense and as vertical as you can. And so that's, you know, I see it becoming more and more popular within our, you know, we have a TOD, and it's going to make sense for there to be more multifamily and townhouse development, because it'll be very attractive. And, and so I think, you know, this decision, I actually think, is almost at least as important as the detached housing, because the detached housing, probably in not that many years, will be on its way out as a, much of an impact source. It'll be the townhome and the multifamily.
I will say that for a different project, I've been looking at pre-applications and the kind of projects that are coming in, and there are a number of pre-applications for different townhouse projects throughout the community. So I do think that this is a housing style. I'm not saying that these are in single-family areas, but even in, just in the multifamily areas, it's a new town, it's a new housing style that we're seeing more of.
Councilmember Danuski.
So I'm having a hard one, hard time deciding on this one, too, because I can see it either way. But if you're saying townhouses have more bedrooms, you know, there are plenty of condos that have two and three bedrooms, and I don't know about more than that, but I don't know, now you're distinguishing between two styles of the, of really multifamily. So, anyway, that's why it's hard for me to figure out. You've taken a step into the multifamily world that we're not all the way in. I don't know.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I, to me, it does seem like a townhome is more towards the single-family side than a multifamily and/or apartment. It just seems a sharp distinction appropriate for inclusion in the impact fees.
I am ambivalent.
I guess I'm not ambivalent. I'd like to see them included.
And so would I. I mean, and I guess, I did a lousy job of conveying my point, is that you're not going to see a lot of large, one-level apartments being built.
Right.
But we are going to see a lot of large townhouses being built.
Right.
And I think that, and the townhouses will oftentimes be twice the, or close to twice the size in square footage, or can be pretty easily of what, and oftentimes, they'll have, you know, a built-in garage or two. And so it's, it is, it is much more logical to use it as housing for a family, I think. And honestly, they're, you know, if you've got kids, three flights of stairs isn't as big of a deal, because they don't care.
So what do we do here? We need direction.
I'm fine with the staff recommendation.
And staff recommendation is not to include them. Is that correct?
Yes, to include them.
Is to include them. Wonderful.
So wonderful, meaning that that's the direction that we're going to take?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, just making sure. Okay. So I appreciate your direction. So the next step then would be for an ordinance to be drafted and getting the interlocal agreement in place. There would have to be a public hearing before you adopt the ordinance, so this will be coming back to you at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda, receive and file the December 2017 financial report for the city of Kenmore. Ms. Gregory?
Well...
Our finance director is going to tell us that income was better than expected and expenses were less than expected.
The end.
The end.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am really very pleased to present the December 2017 financial report that is in your agenda packet tonight and point out that the year closed with a positive net outcome, with revenues exceeding expenditures by five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Primarily, this was due to underspending in the appropriations and revenues that were very close to what was budgeted. So we didn't take in a lot more revenues during the year, but we did underspend on the expenditure side. But remember, it's the, it's the middle of a two-year budget period, so you can expect that some of those unspent dollars may show up in 2018, just based on workload scheduling, particularly in the community development and the economic development budgets. But where expenditures were truly lower than anticipated were areas such as district court costs and jail costs, surprisingly, and then salary savings in the engineering department. In the major general fund revenue categories, property taxes and sales taxes, franchise fees, all performed better than budget, but they were offset by lower-than-expected utility taxes and reimbursements from capital funds for staff costs. Development revenues were really close to the budget expectations, but it was the only revenue source that was lower than in prior years. Other than the normal ongoing operating expenses of the general fund, transfers to other funds from the general fund included half a million dollars to street maintenance from water and sewer franchise fees, and a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars was transferred to the Kenmore... and $123,000 was transferred to the Kenmore Village Fund as budgeted to support operations and maintenance of the hangar in the town square. So the ending fund balance reserves for the general fund at the close of 2017 were three and a half million dollars. The other operating fund that we have, the street maintenance fund, you may notice that the expenditures are running a little high compared to budget. And this is due primarily to some unbudgeted traffic calming measures that were implemented in 2017, as well as costs of maintaining a consultant to assist with negotiations of the Lake Forest Park contract and to follow up on the Public Works Service Analysis Project. This being the end of the first year since we issued bonds, I wanted to share some information about the walkways and waterways debt and the projects. As noted in the financial report in your packet, the city made the first principal payment on the debt service for the bonds in December, which was $845,000. And interest that we paid during the year was about $292,000. So these payments were made from the excess property taxes that were collected on our behalf by King County and as approved by the voters back in 2016. And on those walkways and waterway bond projects, you might remember that as a borrower, the city, for IRS compliance, is expected to spend down the $9.8 million bond proceeds in about three years. So I've been tracking to see how close we're coming to those projections. For instance, on the Rota Dender and Water Walk project, we projected to spend about $160,000 in 2017 and construct in 2018. But in fact, we spent $780,000 this year and have essentially completed that project, which was an early win for the, for the entire walkways and waterways process. So overall, our projections were pretty good and a little conservative, because in total, we estimated we'd spend about $1.3 million and we actually spent 1.9 of the bond proceeds. So we're not lagging in that consideration. And our projections for the next two years are there will spend, is that we'll spend about $4 million of those proceeds in 2018 and another $4 million in 2019. And just to remind you that those bond funds are segregated from our operating cash investments and they're held in a separate State of Washington local government investment pool account, which is now earning a, might be 1.5%. So, and then before, before I end, I wanted to draw your attention to this report in your packet where you'll find the workload and performance measure data that the departments collect and report on. The police report was omitted from the packet, so I emailed it to each of you this evening. I have a paper copy if you'd like it, but I thought you might prefer it electronically. So again, there's a lot of data, a lot of charts and graphs in the written report that I didn't want to walk through necessarily specifically. But if you have any questions about the report, I'd be happy to answer those now.
There does not appear to be any questions.
Thank you, then the report is ready for your acceptance?
So the chair will entertain a motion to accept and file the 2017 financial report. Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So you have unanimous approval to receive and file it.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda, authorize the city manager to proceed with either design alternatives one or two for the Northeast 181st Street, 65th through 67th sidewalk project. Mr. Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
How's Hank?
What's that?
How's Hank?
He's doing good. We're here to discuss the 181st sidewalk project. This is the sidewalk project that is on the north side of 181st Street, between 65th and 67th Avenue. And this is a project that's funded by TIB, a TIB grant and local funds. Back in January, we had a brief staff report where we kind of went over our preferred alternative, which was, as you see here, which is an eight-foot wide continuous sidewalk with an eight-foot wide amenity zone. And it yields nineteen, roughly up to nineteen parallel parking stalls. And during that staff report, there was some discussion on whether or not we wanted to save the large sycamore tree that is adjacent, is approximately in the middle of the alignment here. So we looked at an alternative where we could save that. Alternative two is going around that sycamore tree, which creates a small pinch point in the sidewalk.
Can you move the cursor to where that sycamore tree is?
Sure. So, right here. So to get around that tree, we create a little pinch point in the sidewalk where it narrows to five feet. And it also reduces the yield on the, on-street parking to around sixteen stalls, up to sixteen stalls.
So you go down from nineteen to three by saving the nineteen parking stalls, on-street parking stalls?
Correct.
From nineteen to sixteen by saving that tree?
Yeah, so there's a difference of three.
Is there an issue with the roots of that tree undermining the sidewalk?
There's currently a small sidewalk right there and we'd be kind of in that same footprint. So I don't think there'll, not necessarily, but, so.
So we don't really know how long that asphalt pavement's been there in front of that tree. So it could be five years, ten years, never that we see any effects from that tree. It's a pretty old tree and we haven't seen any real root structure going under it, but there is a large root right in front of that asphalt portion of the sidewalk. So it's too hard to say. There's a catch, there's a storm system that runs through there, so it may not be affecting the sidewalk because of that, just don't know.
The tree itself, since it is a mature tree, do we know, has it, has an arborist looked at it? Do we know anything about the health of it?
So we did have an arborist go and look at all the trees along this, this alignment. And there was two large birch trees that they said are probably ready to take down. And the sycamore tree was actually doing pretty well. So that's why we're, we're looking to possibly save that and get some direction from council on that. There's also some discussion at that staff report regarding if we wanted to try and put in angled parking. So we.
Actually, before Kent talks about that, I did want to mention that we did look at aligning the sidewalk behind the tree, near the property line. But given that there's a, there's a big grade difference there and we would not meet ADA if we were to do that and we'd wind up having to cut down the soils there, which would probably damage or destroy the tree. And also, the other thing I want to point out is just to the east of that, there are two driveways that we have to maintain access to. And if we were to save the tree and create the sidewalk there, we would have to have an alternative form of sidewalk, which would pretty much be at the full grade of the existing roadway. So it'd almost look like one wide driveway. So it wouldn't look very good at that location, because we can't meet ADA, we can't transition, we don't have enough space to transition up to the driveway then back down to the other driveway. So we're, we'd have to have a very flat-looking area right there.
You know, we're thinking in the future, things will be redeveloped. If and when that happens, and the developer decides that tree goes away, do we have any chance of reconfiguring the sidewalk?
That would depend on the developer that came in. If a developer came in and purchased the house that's in front of the tree and they also purchased the property, the strip mall there, then yes, they probably could take out the tree and get everything to align. But both properties would have to sell, because the conflict really happens at the property line between both.
And this is an interim condition too. So if a development did come in, we could have them build it to standard, which is an eight-foot wide.
That's where I'm going, yeah. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Is the, is the tree in the right of way or is it on their property?
It's in the right of way, so you could see that.
I was just clarifying, because it, I just wanted to be clear on that. I mean, I am the one who brought up the tree last time we were talking about this in January. And I still think that we should, I still think we should, we should try to save the tree if we can. You know, it's very easy, you know, to just bulldoze everything through and put in, you know, our standard. But this is a large biomass on a main street. It provides a lot of shade. You said it's in good health, these things live to be 200, 250 years old. They, they're hardy trees from what I can tell. And, you know, while we, the street trees will, we will put in, at some point, will be sizable. It'll take a generation or two for them to kind of have the same sort of significance on the street. So I'm definitely leaning towards option two. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to put that together.
And we're still yielding a lot of on-street parking with saving the tree. You know, it's a net three difference, but, so I did want to touch on a little bit about the angled parking discussion that was had at the staff report. And basically, it does yield more parking, but it does have right-of-way impacts. So we would have to purchase property and it would cost more that would come out of local funds, because we contacted TIB and they said that if we deviated from our original scope of the grant, that, that it would be on the local, local funds to do that. So, and this alternative would really impact the drive-through for that coffee shack. It would remove one of them. But I did want to show this as an alternative, because it does provide more parking and it, it was what was discussed at that meeting. So I guess we would like to just, we're at the point now where we can, we have a consultant onboard, we're ready to go, we just need to get direction on which one you like the best.
Isn't there two lanes on that coffee shop?
There is.
So one lane would be affected, the other lane is still wide open?
Yeah, and this, this alternative, we're thinking, would roughly cost another $150,000 to $200,000 more.
And it could gain some parking spots that are sorely needed.
Yeah, and it could extend the project, because it is a kind of a complex right-of-way acquisition.
How many more parking spaces does it get you?
It gets one additional parking stall.
If you save the tree.
Yeah, if we don't save the tree, well, we'll get a net four increase.
So it only increases by one?
With, we're showing the angled parking with the tree. So if you add three more, if we, if we decided to remove the tree.
Right, but if we save the tree, we're only gaining one spot by going angled.
Correct.
Okay, fine. Councilmember Smith?
I think I understood what you just said. So if, if, by taking this section and going from parallel to angled, how many on this particular one that you're showing here in front of me with saving the tree, how, how many spots do we gain then?
So this, this alternative here?
Yeah.
Nets 11 stalls on the north, which is the angled parking, and up to nine on the bottom, which is a total of 20. If you go back to the original preferred alternative, we get 10 stalls that are parallel and up to nine on the south side, but we end up removing the tree as a result. So the angled parking will give us four more stalls than our original alternative if we remove the tree.
So then, the equation really is, it's the time and then it's, it's 150, so almost 40,000 more for four more stalls by going angled?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because that's, you said 150 more for the acquisition?
Yeah, it's the acquisition, so there's roughly 1,600 square feet of a strip that we would need to acquire. And then it has impacts to the, the way the property's functioning. So there could be some costs associated with removing that drive-through.
Right.
Deputy Mayor?
So I'm looking at alternative one, alternative two. And it seems like in alternative two, we've traded some of the parking spaces for amenity zones. I mean, just to the west of the tree, it looks like there could still be a parking space or two that exists in the alternative one. Is there a reason why there couldn't be a parking space or two?
We could squeeze in, I, I think, saving the tree really is removing that one stall. We could try and really squeeze in another couple.
Well, I mean, that's, the main difference here seems to be whether or not there's an amenity zone or not. I mean, that seems to be the, the main difference between these two, is just whether we're using that eight-foot space for grass or if we're using it for, for parking. I mean, it looks like you could still put in a two or three, probably two spaces and then maybe one on the other side of, between those two driveways, depending on how big it is.
If we really tried to squeeze the parking in, it'd probably only be a net loss of one stall to save that tree.
I mean, that's, because we're not quite doing apples to apples here when you are changing out the parking for amenity zone. It's, it's, that's kind of, to me, it seems to be exaggerating the difference between saving the tree or not. I mean, I don't mean to say that you're exaggerating it, but it is kind of apples to oranges sort of comparison here when we're using the amenity zone for a different purpose in one versus the other.
So if you flip back to, if you look at the alternative one, you'll see how the, we have to transition into the parking stalls. So we still have to look at how much space that we have to take away in order to get the parallel parking in with saving the tree. So, and then we have to provide a minimum width for the stall itself, for the vehicle. So without doing the math, it could be one extra stall we can get or maybe two. Because I think right now that says three.
Yeah, and that's based off a 20-foot width curb, curb length. So I think we, we probably could shoehorn another two stalls in there with alternative two, if we really wanted to remove that amenity zone.
Possibly.
Thanks. Councilmember Danuski.
I'm supporting option two with saving the tree. And I guess I don't really have a problem if we shoehorn another spot in there, but I want to make sure that we have good site distance and we're not just packing in parking spots and then we're going to have site distance problems from the driveways later.
Any more questions?
Your honor, if I could just add something. So first of all, I think the library is going to be pleased with getting some more parking, because that is an underparked facility. They're always struggling with parking issues. And there's still community outreach to do. We still need to reach out to some stakeholders around there. So far, I think you've only been in touch with the strip mall owner, right?
Correct.
Right, so you'll, you'll, we'll, we'll still need to reach out to the other property owners and tenants that are affected there and get their input.
I think all the houses on the north side are rentals, or the two in the middle.
Deputy Mayor?
So quick question, you know, we've put in these two-hour timed spaces. Is this zone in that area that we authorized the city manager to put in timed parking? Or would we need to expand that? Because I kind of feel, especially the spaces directly in front of the library, we might want to look at something as short as half hour for a couple of them to keep those churned rather than letting people park there all day.
I don't know if we've included that as part of our two-hour zone, but it is something that we could definitely look at, but yes, I would recommend.
Yeah, it'd make a lot of sense to extend that the next block if it isn't already.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely would recommend extending it to at least 65th.
Or perhaps less than two hours. I mean, you know, there are people that just want to go in and come out and, and they have a hard time finding a parking spot. There's only, I think there's only one or two that allow for the book drop. So it would really be nice if we had some short-term parking there in front of the library to.
That hair salon, even though, even though the parking, striped parking is in the right of way, they're going to lose the ability to park five vehicles there, so.
And we can look to do some limited-term parking, maybe 30-minute type stalls in there as well too.
Something that'll allow those streakers to get in and get out. Okay, so we have two alternatives here. We can just.
We have three alternatives.
We have three, but it sounds like it's between one and two.
Okay, so then, maybe the easiest way to do this, now if I'm wrong, please tell me, is to go for a motion for each one of them, and if you don't want that one, then don't make the motion, it'll just die, and then you can make a motion for the one that you want. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, I would move, uh, that we, um, adopt, uh, alternative two, um, and look at possibly squeezing in a little bit more parking to the west of the tree.
Okay, so I'm assuming nobody wants one, nobody wants three. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all right. Any further discussion? So then the motion is to approve, um, option number two. Slightly modified. Slightly modified, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, no further discussion?
Question, what's the, uh...
Alternative two with angled parking or parallel?
No, angled two with just looking at they can squeeze a couple more parallel spaces to the west of the tree.
So in this area, we would, we would try and squeeze in another two.
Be parallel, no angled. All right, any further questions, comments? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Shrubnik? Sorry? Okay. Councilmember Curtis? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'm excited for volunteer appreciation this coming Wednesday evening from six p.m. to nine p.m. here at City Hall. Um, at, uh, it starts at six p.m., but about six-thirty, there's going to be some, uh, nice comments said about our volunteers, and then at seven o'clock, they're going to play a movie, it's going to be Coco, Coco. Yeah, it's a good, it's really good. That's all I have.
So my understanding is Councilmember Marshall and Councilmember Shrubnik, you guys are going to the Special Olympics reception and you will not be at the, um, appreciation, how can you do both?
Just one ends up...
Okay. Okay.
I'll have to check on it.
Okay.
Got to get home, that's the big part.
Um, all right. Um, Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Nominations, Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing, Deb.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Uh, I have just one thing, I'll save the others for other meetings. Um, I attended the National League of Cities, it was very worthwhile, great presentations, uh, from administrators and political figures, meeting folks from around Washington and around the country, some of the highlights, day-long session on urban planning and development simulations from the perspective of developers and city officials, and how to make a city message and attractive to people, and preparing for the census in 2020, and that relates to my comment. Um, uh, there, and the only reason I'm bringing this up tonight, given that it's late, is that comments are due about the census process this week, by the end of this week, so I actually drafted a letter, and it relates to much of the discussion that happened at that seminar. The issue is the inclusion or lack of inclusion of a citizenship question within the 2020 census, and, uh, there was rather heated discussion about the, um, desire to not have a citizenship question in the census, um, and to make sure to write to Secretary Ross, who's Secretary of Commerce oversees the Census Bureau, um, to express that. Teresa Masqueda from City of Seattle is on the panel, there were other people from around the country on a panel, all in agreement on this topic, City of Seattle is doing this as well. Um, I think King County might be, but I'm not entirely sure, she wasn't sure. Um, I'll just read you the letter and hope that you will approve that it comes from the city, we could do it from the mayor or the city manager, I don't know what the right thing is. Dear Secretary Ross, we are writing to request that the upcoming 2020 census not include any questions related to U.S. citizenship. We believe the inclusion of questions asking respondents whether they are U.S. citizens will result in inaccurate and incomplete census counts. People concerned about responding to such questions may either not respond to the questions, respond inaccurately, or not respond to the census at all. These issues are particularly likely at this time due to prominent national discussions of building a wall to prevent border crossings from Mexico, uncertainty regarding youth who have had the protection under the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program, reducing various types of immigrant visas, and deportation more broadly. Thank you for considering this request. So I'd like to, I'm not sure of the exact process, but I'd love to be able to make a motion on this.
So, anybody have objections to writing this letter?
I don't necessarily have an objection, I just don't, um, I, I honestly wasn't part of the discussion, and I don't understand why it would be so awful. That's, I mean, I've, this is honestly, this is the first time I've ever even thought about this issue, but I, I think of it from a census, it's like, isn't there some value in knowing if you've got...
Right, there, there, there may be, I mean, I think the issues are exactly what I said, which is it will lead to inaccurate and incomplete census, census count.
Couldn't you make that about every question on the census just about, that people may do something other than what they, uh, I, I honestly, I, I won't support it, because I don't know enough about it, except for what you just told me, and I don't doubt it, but I just, um, I don't know enough about the issue, and I don't understand what the arguments are of why it's been included. Clearly, if it's in there, it's in there for a reason, and I don't understand all the reasons why.
Deputy Mayor?
I don't think the question's been included before, I think this is something coming from the administration, and, and if you have somebody from the government showing at your home, you know, asking if you're a citizen in this current environment, that could lead to different outcomes than we've had in previous censuses, censai, censuses, anyway. Um, so I think there is a concern about, you know, having government coming and essentially asking for people's papers, um, at their homes. Um, it's the same reason why, uh, our county government and our county sheriff, um, has in place, uh, their, um, uh, sanctuary, um, uh, set, uh, yeah, they, they, yeah, they're, they're, um, with how they work with ICE, because they want people to be able to come to the police without fear that they're then going to get themselves arrested.
Deputy Takula?
[laughing].
So I, I, you know, this is a question that's been on the census for years, I, I could understand your concerns, and this is something that the administration is trying to add right now, and I think it could be argued that they're trying to add it to further so fear and, um, and discord, um, between populations that they have issues with, I'm trying to put this as nicely as possible. Um, and I think it's not their normal practice, so I think this is something new that, that is being introduced, um, and I just think in this political climate, it doesn't help anybody, and we do need, in order for the census to be useful, we do need as accurate a count as possible, and, um, if this is something that's going to drive people away from participating, that, that's problematic, uh, because that affects our funding for block grants, that affects, uh, our representation in Congress, affects a lot of different things, um, so you want to make sure that everybody's accurately counted as much as possible, um, so I support it, but...
So, Councilmember Danuski?
So do we know that it wasn't on there? Because I was kind of in the same, uh, question where it, if it was on there before, you know, was, was that kind of used for social service grants or stuff? If you're not a citizen, you might need different services, so I was kind of having the same, the same questions, but if it wasn't on the census before, then I'd support that. If it... I'm not absolutely positive of the answer on that, so I, I, I think even if it has been on there before, we're in a different time now with respect to immigration issues, so, and it, there was certainly, um, I mean, this, these were, and, you know, National League of Cities, people from all over the country, all political stripes, um, pretty much unanimous that inclusion at this juncture would reduce, um, census counts and, um, discourage people from responding.
So, according to CNN, make of that what you will, between eighteen twenty and nineteen fifty, almost every, uh, decennial census asked a question of citizenship, um, they do do, when they do, eighteen twenty, nineteen fifty?
Nineteen fifty.
Yeah, um, and it doesn't look like it's been in practice since then during the decennial ones, they've done some on sample, when they're doing small sample, um, mid, um, census updates, according to CNN, so...
So they have included it on the...
They, they have included it in the big one, they've done, they do small samples to kind of get a sense of things.
Right, right, you guys understand, there's like the big blanket one, and then there's the targeted, not targeted, but the small samples, yeah. The last big one, was it included or not?
No, no, the last big one is included, what's according to the story is nineteen fifty, so...
Not?
Yeah.
Councilmember Marshall?
According to NBC News, the headline screams, "Twenty Twenty Census to Add Question on Citizenship Status," if this is indeed the NBC News website.
Do we want more information on this? Or do we want...
I would support it, and so, because I just don't know, and, and, and if the goal is accuracy, because that's what everybody says, we want the most accurate, well, then you're not getting the most accurate information, if that's what your goal is, and so I just, it's just a fundamental difference, I, and to me, it's irrelevant, um, I understand that there's, it's a politically difficult time, and believe me, I'm as frustrated as anybody about what's going on. That's not the reason for me to support it, because, um, I, I, I don't support it, because I just don't know, I, I can't vote for something I don't know about.
Right, so all, we did get a little bit of education from one of the, um, uh, census historians, um, which was pretty fascinating, actually, the original intent of the census was literally to count people, no characteristics, and for a long time, that's all that was in the census, um, this whole concept that we need descriptors about people is a rela, is a newer concept, um, so I, and again, I, I mean, the rationale for this is, you know, inclusion of this kind of question could, could, probably will suppress the actual counts, which is the intent.
Councilmember Marshall?
So, uh, are you going to make a motion?
Well, I don't, I don't know the process.
No, I'm trying, it's not necessary, I'm just trying to get a vote here, and then we can just agree to send the letter or not send the letter.
And what is your proposal, Councilmember Shrubnik? What is...
To send the letter on behalf of the council.
Of the city, and usually I, and usually I sign something like that.
I so move.
Well, it's not necessary.
Yes.
Um, okay, so there's at least four people here to draft the letter, so, um, can we cause that to happen? Okay, wonderful. Um, Councilmember Marshall?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thank you.
So, it just so happens that Dal Konstantin sent out a letter today on the census, and they want to make sure that there is, um, accurate count and fair count in, um, of all our residents is conducted in partnership with any jurisdiction organization, community member, or stakeholder that shares that vision, and they are forming a group, Local Update of Census Addresses, um, LUCA program, and it's, uh, one of the processes implemented to ensure the Census Bureau has the most current, accurate residential addresses on file for every jurisdiction. So, uh, anyway, there seems to be, um, concern all over that we get accurate numbers. Um, there is a meeting tomorrow of a group that we partially funded to do the economic study of the locks, and, um, we're continuing to work on funding for the locks, I know Senator Murray is very, very, um, involved and very much in favor of getting all the funding necessary to do this, there's one big twelve-million-dollar project that is got to do, I think, with one of the large gates, um, this year that is going to be funded, uh, but we want to make sure that stays on track, so I will be attending that meeting tomorrow, and I think I reported back last time, we had really good, good meetings with the Army Corps, and it, they were really the most supportive, I think I've heard them, uh, in, in quite a while, and certainly Senator Murray's office, Josephine Eckert, that, um, is, is one of her aides that has involved core, core projects, certainly I've never heard her encouraging on, uh, on any possibility of dredging or getting, um, funds for, uh, contamination studies, so, and they're very supportive of us this time, so, anyway, if there is no further...
Sorry.
Yes?
Your Honor, how are we going to expedite a fresh shipment of donuts from a certain donut shop in Iowa? We, Tom's Donuts, is it?
Tom's.
We need to have that.
We do, and I just might be bringing back a box. Certainly on my next trip, we'll bring back a box.
And what are the odds that they own the donut shop? I mean, that's right up your alley.
What are the odds? Well, it was up my alley, it is not up my alley any longer. So are looking-for Easter candies on sale after Easter, not part of my plans. All right, no further business come in front of us, we're adjourned.